Tell me when.
You could go ahead and start.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the August 25th, 2020 Vista Consolidated Meeting. Meeting is now called to order. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N-2920. In the event a quorum of the City Council loses electrical power or suffers an internal or an internet connection outage that is not corrected within 10 minutes, the meeting will automatically be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled of the City Council. Any other items on the agenda that the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. And that's if we would lose electrical power or suffer an internet connection outage that isn't corrected in 10 minutes. That's what that is about. So with that, I'll have a roll call by our City Clerk Kathy Valdez.
Thank you. Mayor Ritter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Present.
All members are present. Also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Daryl Piper.
Okay. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And for the Zoom for members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you may raise your hand to indicate you'd like to speak by clicking the raise hand feature on your screen or by pressing star nine on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the Agenda cover sheet. Staff will be lowering everyone's hand now to start the meeting. And we will announce when to raise your hand to indicate you would like to make a comment on the specific item being discussed. You may only speak on an item once, and public comment is limited to three minutes. So that will have the approval of the Agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening to the Agenda.
We have three presentations this evening, and proclamations recognizing the recipients of the 2019 City Vista Employee Awards. And so the first one is where our employer, employee Laura Meads, who was recently recognized as the recipient of the City of Vista 2019 Mayor's Excellence in Service Award. Whereas Laura is the voice of the city to every single person who calls in. She's the first person they have contact with, and as such, she's the first impression they have about our organization. Laura is the attentive ear that assists in the most customer-friendly way. She's always cheerful, positive, and absolutely delightful, not just in her interactions with the public, but also internally with employees. Not only is Laura the first person the public interacts with over the phone, she's also the face of the Human Resources Department when an employee comes into HR. She greets them by name, making them feel welcome and comfortable. Over the few years she's been with the city, she's built relationships so that when an employee comes to HR, she almost always knows something about them personally and is able to say much more than a simple hello. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Laura Meads on being chosen as the City of Vista 2019 Mayor's Excellence in Service Award recipient and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 26, 2020, as Laura Meads' Day in the City of Vista. And with that, where is Laura? Yay, we can clap for Laura. And is she on? Do we have her on here?
Yep, Laura's on.
Hello. You want to say something?
I do. I just want to say thank you so much. I'm extremely honored. It's amazing what the city does for their employees. I feel appreciated every day. I feel welcomed, and my whole HR office helps support me. I couldn't do what I do if it wasn't for them. And to be honored for just doing my job is amazing. And I also couldn't ask for better bosses. Dolores and Anna, they're the best bosses a girl could ask for. They support me and give me confidence every single day, and I truly, truly appreciate this. Thank you.
Congratulations, Laura.
Thank you.
Yay. So our next award goes to Chris RC, Manager of the Year. And whereas Chris was recently recognized as recipient of the City of Vista 2019 Manager of the Year Award. Whereas Chris RC is a Public Works Operations Manager and is responsible for the Streets, Stormwater, and Park Divisions overseeing 20 personnel. Under Chris's leadership, the Parks Division won three grants: two grants to plant, maintain 550 trees, and one grant to remove up to 150 dead diseased trees, a first for the city. These grants total more than $500,000. And whereas the Streets, Stormwater Division has completed many special projects throughout the city in addition to their day-to-day duties. These special projects include retaining walls, fences and gates, drainage projects, curb gutter sidewalks, removal of homeless encampments, and blight reduction throughout the city by working with retail vendors and being a member of the city's homeless task force. Whereas Chris has led the efforts for improvement of the city right-of-way along the SR-78 corridor by landscaping open areas and building relationships with many agencies and neighboring cities to assist Vista with blight eradication and maintenance projects. And whereas Chris's efforts to improve the sidewalk maintenance with new techniques and incorporating GIS surveys is having results to better assist our residents and visitors. Whereas Chris makes himself available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to issues throughout the city. He's also been innovative in executing his work within a limited budget. The staff respect him for his honesty, his hard work, character, and genuine compassion. Chris has assisted many employees as they further their education plans, and he's won scholarships for employees and coordinated staff participating in public agency events. He's a team player, presents himself well in meetings, and continues to significantly contribute to the improvement of the Public Works Department. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Chris RC for being chosen as the 2019 City of Vista Manager of the Year and do hereby proclaim Thursday, August 27, as Chris RC Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations to Chris. And we have Chris on here?
Yes, we do. Yes, Chris is here.
Would you like to say something, Chris, maybe? A few words?
Chris, you're on mute.
Are you there yet?
No, I don't think his microphone's working correctly, Mayor.
Oh, no, Chris. Well, congratulations to you. We appreciate all you do. Thank you. Okay, so then I guess should we move on to the next one, I guess?
Yes.
Okay, so then we'll move on to Aldo Hernandez. He's Employee of the Year. So was recently recognized as a City of Vista 2019 Employee of the Year. Stormwater Lead Maintenance Worker with a crew of three. He is in charge of the inspection and maintenance of the MS4 system, as well as the inspection and maintenance of 57 permitted stormwater sites. Last year, Aldo Hernandez led his crew in the repair of a storm drainpipe that was severely corroded, causing a sinkhole on New Year's Eve. On New Year's Eve, that had to be tough, not celebrating doing that. The sinkhole developed on Foothill Drive, a very highly traveled road that served the entry and exit out of Vista. Aldo's crew completed the repair within five days with minimal traffic delays to drivers during the holiday period. This emergency project was a success thanks to Aldo's good planning and coordination with other crews that assisted him with traffic control and hauling of equipment and materials. Whereas most recently, Aldo led his crew in the removal and installation of old failing 766-foot-long French drain system on Countrywood Lane. Engineering received contractor bids for $92,000. Due to the high cost, engineering reached out to Stormwater to repair the pipe. Aldo quickly planned and scheduled the job and was done within five days for the total cost of $5,000 in material. The completion of the drain repair was vital to engineering as a drainage issue needed to be addressed prior to the scheduled street paving program. Whereas Aldo also played a key role in the trash and homeless encampment removal project that took place in the Hacienda Drive biological preserve open space. This project presented some challenges, one which was how to transport enormous amounts of trash across an active-running creek that was steep, slippery, and hard to maneuver through. Aldo came up with a system that consisted of tying a rope to a tree, then pulling it with a backhoe arm to create tension, followed by adding a pulley to the rope to pull the trash across the creek. This avoided crews having to walk across the creek, facing the possibilities of slipping, falling, and injuring themselves. This system also sped up the cleanup and kept all the workers safe. Aldo and his crew also assisted the wastewater division to build a new easement road, which now allows the travel of city and sheriff vehicles to patrol this area to keep it free of blight and homeless encampments. And whereas Aldo has also proven himself as an effective leader of his unit, he's very well-respected and works as hard as every member of his crew. He positively contributes to the Public Works Department with innovative ideas and a can-do attitude. His work ethic, integrity, and dedication to the department make him worthy of this award. So now therefore, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate Aldo Hernandez on being chosen as the City of Vista 2019 Employee of the Year recipient and do hereby proclaim Friday, August 28, 2020, as Aldo Hernandez Day in the City of Vista. Congratulations to Aldo.
Appreciate it.
Aldo, what do you do? Want to say a few words?
Yeah, well, I just want to say it's always good to have a good crew around you. If it wasn't for my guys working around me and giving it 100% of our time, things wouldn't get done. And also with having good management, with the support of the good management now is putting a lot of trust in me, I just want to say thanks to everybody for all that.
You're welcome. Congratulations to you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Aldo.
Anybody else want to say anything? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to echo congratulations to all of our award recipients. We have a great staff. We are told constantly by our constituents, as well as colleagues and staff from other cities who might try to poach, but don't do it. We have a great staff, and it's an honor to work with them, and especially during these times, which are a little bit more difficult than we might normally have. Everybody has really stepped up to the plate, and it has kind of noticed. So I want to say thank you to our award winners. And I don't know how you decide who wins these awards, because everybody does a great job, and I just want to say thank you all. Thank you.
I agree. It's very difficult to pick any one person, but they all do a great job. We have great employees in the City of Vista. So seeing no other hands waving at me, I will, I guess we will move on then to our City Manager Patrick Johnson. He's going to provide our COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Just a very brief update on COVID-19, primarily relating to the county and the state. I think, as you all know, the county has reached its metric that allows it to be removed from the state watch list, which means that it must maintain a certain status for 14 consecutive days. This will allow for the K through 12 schools to reopen physically if they choose to. There are six more days during this 14-day period that need to take place for them to get off the watch list. So if all things remain the same going forward, on September 1st, the county will be off the watch list. So at that time, schools that choose to in San Diego County can reopen physically. Vista Unified School District, they open, I believe it's on September 8th. They have committed to doing six weeks of the virtual learning. And then come the week of October 19th or 20th, they will entertain whether they want to go back physically if, in fact, the county gets off the state's watch list. I did want to say that really the watch list at this time, as it states today, only really applies to schools. It does not apply to businesses. So we still have a number of businesses, as you all know, that are affected by not being able to operate indoors. And so the state, I should say, the county is hoping to hear from the state this week on news of reopening procedures or increased guidance from the state that they don't already have. But right now, as you know, we have gyms, we have fitness centers, we have barber shops, salons, places of worship, movie theaters, wineries, breweries alike that are not able to open indoors right now. And so hopefully, the county will get some good news from the state this week, and that's what they're hoping for. The latest numbers are, within the county, there are 37,000, almost 37,000 people who have tested positive for COVID. 36,727 is the exact number. Unfortunately, there have been 660 deaths. And in Vista, we have had a total of 936 positive cases, and these were the numbers as of last night. So that concludes the brief update. If anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them or answer them.
Let's go to Green.
I'm just wondering, what does it take for us to be put back on the watch list? Like, I know we've been off for seven days. If the numbers come back one day, are we immediately put back and we got to reset for 14 days? And what does that number look like, and how far away are we from hitting that number on a daily basis?
So the numbers actually, the numbers actually look pretty good. It's case rate, so greater than 100 people testing positive out of 100,000 population over a three-day period. Right now, we're testing at 81.7 in the county, which is a very good rate. The other one is hospital capacity. So if you approach 80% of hospital capacity, then you've triggered that metric. And right now, the county's at 69%. And hospitalizations is another one. ICU capacity. So right now, ICUs have a capacity of 35%. When you get under 20%, it triggers that metric. And then ventilator capacity is another one. And right now, we have 52% of ventilators that are available, and when you get under 25, you trigger that metric. So there's this, I think if you trigger three of the five or six different metrics, that's what puts you back on the watch list over a three-day period.
So they have to be triggered constantly, three days in a row, in order to put you back on? Okay, and it looks like we have a little cushion in all of those metrics for right now that we could really hit that 14-day target.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, with that, does see anybody else that wanted to say anything? See, nobody. We'll move on to Captain Justin White. He's going to provide the Vista Sheriff's Station update. So Captain White?
And give me just a moment to bring up the slideshow. All right, there we go.
All right, are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Ritter and City Council members. Thank you for giving me the time to present the 2020 Law Enforcement update this evening. I'll start with a quick look at some of the relevant stats for Vista. In Vista, we've had about 18, a little over 18,000 calls for service this year. Our crime rate is at 16.6, which I'll talk about a little bit later. As you know, we have about 93 sworn officers in Vista, and that equates to about 0.9 deputies per 1,000 residents here in Vista. Regionally, that number is about 1.28 per 1,000 population, and the average nationwide is 2.8. The law enforcement expenditure capita for law enforcement here in Vista is about $215 per resident. Right now, our crime rate is at 16.8, and as you can see, it's gone down over the last 25 years. And I know it looks statistically really good, but I would caution that likely this is a result of COVID-19 and some of the state and county orders that have been enacted as a result of that. We do expect crime could possibly tick up as those restrictions are removed and people start going back to work and businesses are reopened. But having said that, over the last several years, Vista has seen a consistent decline in crime rates, as you can see by the chart. And I wish the Sheriff's Department could take full credit for this, but I have to admit that it's been a team effort between the Sheriff's Department and the City of Vista. The City Council and the city staff have implemented several programs and made improvements throughout the city that have assisted with us targeting crime throughout the city here. These improvements have assisted our patrol deputies and our crime prevention, or crime prevention people, and our community-oriented policing and problem-solving unit in addressing crimes that impact residents of Vista. Some of these programs include the Homeless Strategic Plan, which encompasses the homeless task force, and Housing Resources for the Homeless. Our cops team works with city, public works, and other community entities to assist those suffering from homelessness in providing resources for them, such as getting them rise to DMV if they're looking to get an ID card or a driver's license, and helping them to get into a shelter and/or seek out counseling if it's something they want. We can also address some of the littering issues throughout the city. Deputies are able, you know, when they find these trash heaps or trash that's been left along, you know, some of the encampments and those kind of things, they're able to call Public Works and get that cleaned up. So it's a great team effort in that regard. We also work with ABC to combat some of the overservicing that we have throughout the city and also serving minors throughout the city. And that's been a great team effort that we've had there. Our city's crime-free multi-housing and graffiti abatement has been instrumental in reducing crime throughout the city. We also target tobacco use by minors. This includes vaping through education. We do inspections and details targeting different businesses or adults who are purchasing or furnishing minors with tobacco. We also monitor the marijuana dispensaries throughout the city. And the current crime rate is a result of the collaboration between the city government and the Sheriff's Department working together to improve Vista's quality of life. And although our crime rate is low, we do have a few areas of concern, domestic violence being one of those. You can see that 45% of the assaults here in Vista are a result of domestic violence. Things that we're doing to combat this or to address the issue is we're regularly posting information and resources for victims on our social media page. The city has added links to the city website on domestic violence, educational videos and resources. When deputies contact victims, they're providing information to our victims, be it, you know, shelter information, counseling resources, and information on their rights and legal resources that they may need. We're also looking into providing some domestic violence classes through community groups such as Mono Amano and the San Diego County Office of Education, their migrant education program. This would help educate those new to the United States on educating them on our domestic violence laws and how they may differ from other countries. The other issue we have, we've been having in the city since April has been our vehicle thefts. As you can see by this, we've had a large spike in our vehicle thefts since April. Some of the top cars that are stolen are 1990s Hondas, Civics, and Accords. This makes up at least 38 to 40% of the vehicles stolen this year. Within the last month, we've been recovering a lot of these stolen vehicles in southern part of Vista, which has helped us. We've actually made an arrest last week on a, or actually, the person was arrested in Oceanside, and this person is someone that we believe has been involved in a numerous number of the auto thefts throughout Vista. We're also working on a public service announcement to put on our Twitter page so that we can help educate the public on things they can do to make their vehicles less likely to be Moving on to community engagement, we're currently developing our community outreach and trying to improve how we use social media, such as Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor to connect with the community here in Vista. We are involved in several community programs. Most of these are in partnership with the City of Vista. And these programs include the Junior Deputy Program, the Leadership Academy. We have deputy readings, where deputies read to children in person or virtually. And our Crime Prevention Unit conducts neighborhood watch meetings and works with the community groups, such as the Vista Community Clinic and South Vista Communities. One of the things that we're going to be improving on, on our side, is from now on, with our neighborhood watch meetings, we're going to have deputies showing up to each of those meetings to make sure that the community can ask them questions and get decent feedback from how deputies are working in their neighborhoods and that kind of thing. We're also involved in regular meetings throughout the community groups, such as the Farm Workers Care Coalition. Later this week, I'll be meeting with the NAACP to continue communications and discuss concerns that are in the community. And so far, it's been going pretty well, as far as that's concerned. In closing, it's been a challenging year with COVID-19 and the changes we have had to make as a result. But I feel in partnership with the City of Vista, we have risen to that challenge and continue to provide quality law enforcement services here in Vista.
Thank you, Captain. Does anybody have questions? I'll start with Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much, Captain White. And, you know, we definitely have some stubborn issues, especially, you know, looking at domestic violence. But just because we are, we're seeing a lot of fires all over California, and Vista's not immune to that, I just wanted to ask if, hopefully, nothing happens, but if there's a situation where we do have a fire, what would the role of the Sheriff's Department be in, I don't know, helping evacuate? Or I just kind of wanted to see, you know, what that process would look like.
Right. And usually with fires, the way that law enforcement will respond to that is, the Fire Department is obviously in charge. It's a fire, and they're the ones with the water. And the personnel that knows how to use those big red trucks that they have. So our job is to coordinate with them, and if they need, you know, roads shut down or a residential area evacuated, we assist with that. So that's a lot of what we do, is notifications, crowd, you know, traffic control, making sure people get, we try to help get the message out by going from neighborhood to neighborhood and provide extra personnel that way.
I'll chime in and say, also preserving the peace when the neighborhoods are cleared out to make sure that nobody comes back into those neighborhoods that are vacant.
Yes. We're obviously out there to help provide security for those areas that are affected by the fires and those kind of things, yes. And help evacuate people when they need it. A lot of times, we have people that are stuck due to medical issues or age, and we'll assist in getting them out of there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Let's go to Member Franklin.
I just wanted to say thank you for your good work and your deputies' good work in the theft from auto and theft of auto in the South of Vista. We appreciate you catching some of the bad guys and driving those numbers down.
That's definitely a challenge. It's been interesting since we've started this COVID thing that we've had so many car thefts, and it is something that we're concentrating on, because that affects, you know, the people in Vista, because you need your car to get to work or get your kids where they need to be, go to the doctor and everything. It's a valuable piece of property that gets taken away from people, so.
Also have a lot of good feedback about our speeding enforcement on Shadow Ridge Drive and other places throughout the city. A lot of very appreciative residents that are very thankful for our traffic enforcement deputies and their good work.
Thanks, sir. Yep. We've seen that the, you know, whenever we do more traffic control in certain areas, especially, it usually drives down the number of accidents we'll have in that area. So anytime we have a flare-up of accidents, we try to do traffic control to, that way people are driving safer, and it keeps everybody, you know, following the speed limits as best they can.
Councilmember Green.
All right. Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank you for your presentation. I actually got a copy of your slideshow, which is awesome. I graduated from high school in 1996 here in Vista, from Ranch of Wayne Vista High School, and the crime rate at that time was 40.25%. And I've lived in Vista continuously since then, so to see our crime rate down to 16.6% and just really being a town where people feel safe and feel like they can be successful, they can drive, they can go to our parks at night, and all of our parks for that matter, I think it's a really great testament to the work that law enforcement does and also that council's done to provide adequate infrastructure and lighting and just everything we've done. So thank you so much. Thank your team so much, and thank you for putting together this presentation. I'm going to share it everywhere so people can see where we've been and where we're at and where we plan to go. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And if I didn't say it enough in that presentation, I do really, since I've been here, I've been here for about six months, and I know each of you already know, I lived here for about 13 years through the 90s and a little bit into the 2000s. And I've seen the improvements that this city, you know, the City Council and the people who work here have done throughout the city. and the people who work here have done throughout the city. And that has a huge impact on crime and the way people feel about how they, about their city and where they're living and they take more pride in and they're less likely to commit crimes. So, you know, I have to give credit to the city council and the city for the work that they've done. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just wanted to say thank you also, Captain, for the work that you do and the deputies and the programs that you're working on throughout the community. I think they'll be very beneficial for our community. And welcome to Vista. You kind of transitioned in at the beginning of the whole COVID shutdown thing. And so I wanted to say welcome to Vista as our captain and welcome back to Vista, to the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank you also. I appreciate all of our sheriffs that are out there every day for their lives on their line, on the line for all of us. So we appreciate you so much and stand behind you. So thank you. And with that, I don't see any other--
Mayor, sorry, we have one public comment.
Oh, okay.
For that. Okay. So it's Justin, I apologize if I pronounce your last name wrong, Doma Steel. Go ahead, Justin.
Hello, Emma Mead. Oh, hi, everyone. Hi, Karina Contreras. You're awesome. All of you are great. Hi, I had a question. So during your presentation, you talked about expanded social media efforts. So I don't want to be that person, but it was really difficult to get onto the Zoom meeting because like I found the old agendas first when I looked up the word Zoom on the Vista city website. So I found old agendas with old links. And so I was wondering if all of you, I don't know, like what the police specifically do, if they have public meetings, but if all forms of the city would consider having one Zoom link that's like reoccurring. So that way people can better access the meetings. Because I went through three Zoom links before I finally found the right one. And I was like, oh crap, I'm like 20 minutes late to this meeting. Not that I'm like an important person here, but I hope that y'all will consider doing something like that or expanding accessibility. For context, I teach seniors how to use the internet and how to engage. And during COVID, you know, a lot of senior citizens and older residents like to be engaged with their city councils, but they can't really do that if the links aren't immediately accessible for them. So I hope that that's something y'all will consider going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. And actually, we are using the same link now. So the one that you found and are using today, we're using for all of our city council meetings. So thanks for that input. And that's it for public comment. We'll head and close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, so seeing no other speakers on this, I want to thank Captain White for coming and giving us our update. And with that, we will, I guess, move on with our meeting to our consent calendar. The recommendations under the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And we have nine consent items this evening. So I would ask, would any of the city council members want to remove an item? I'm looking, 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 and I don't see, I see shaking heads. Okay, do we have any requests from the public? Oh, where's our city clerk? Any requests from the public on this?
There were requests from the public. Thank you.
Okay, with that, then I will, then I would see none. I would close the public portion of the consent calendar and entertain a motion. Oh, Councilmember Franklin.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. And just one thing I want to point out, we are, just to provide for our business owners that are hurting and in need during the COVID crisis, we are moving our business license fees all the way to, Patrick, correct me, to September.
Yeah, so we're extending the deadline all the way to December, which we, penalties don't occur until the new year.
So we're giving businesses a little bit longer to pay those business license fees and appreciate them holding on during this tough time. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Deputy Mayor.
I wanted to say thank you for pointing that out. That was going to be my comment as well. And with that, I would second the motion.
Okay, seeing no other comments, I will, city clerk, please conduct the roll call vote.
All right, please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The consent calendar passes unanimously.
Okay, that moves us on to our public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one, the first public hearing is to receive testimony regarding filing and processing fees for applications to expand the existing premises of a medical cannabis business in the City of Vista. So with that, the public hearing is now open. Assistant City Manager Ally Zimmerman will be providing the staff report. And if any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise their hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the
Thank you, Mayor. Are you guys ready? So this item is a public hearing to establish a medical cannabis retail business expansion application fee. Next slide, Kathy. So as you know, just a little bit of history, Measure Z was approved by the voters of Vista in 2018 and authorizes up to 11 medical cannabis retail locations. Staff has been working to implement that since it was enacted. And with each iteration, we're learning new things about the program and getting new requests from the approved businesses. One of the other Measures Z-related actions taken by council at the end of December was to add a provision for delivery. So we now have applications and processes to take care of all the things we knew about up to that time. But a recent request by a Measures Z-approved business, Measures Z-approved retail to expand their location into the vacant adjacent commercial suite resulted in a staff review of the time and procedures required to process this request. A new application process has been created and a review of the type of requests and staff time required to process said request determined that no existing fee was appropriate. So based on a review of the impacted staff positions and time spent, the current slide does depict the estimated staff time and proposed fee of $390 for the new medical cannabis retail business expansion application fee. Next slide, Kathy. And this completes my presentation with a staff recommendation to close the public hearing and establish a fee to process the application for medical business retail expansion in the amount of $390. Thank you. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, so we'll go to, first of all, we'll do questions. Deputy Mayor Rigby, do you have any questions for? No questions. Okay. How about Councilmember Franklin? Any questions? No. Councilmember Green?
Um, no, I don't have any questions. I just have a statement, but go ahead.
Okay. And then Councilmember Contreras, any questions? Okay, then we'll go and we'll listen to the speaker. So City Clerk Valdez, do you have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have two individuals that would like to speak. The first is Kelly McCormick. Go ahead, Kelly.
Good evening. This is Kelly McCormick, the parent of two teenagers and a public health educator. And I appreciate the staff recommendation to add a fee to the marijuana businesses expanding into a larger setup. Certainly, all fees, especially those associated with marijuana businesses, should truly reflect the staff costs. Speaking frankly, fees alone cannot cover the cost to youth and families. The parents I speak with are not in favor of the expansion of marijuana businesses. There's great concern about the advertisement, normalization, and even the glamorizing of pot use. I urge the city to consider the abundance of pot businesses already allowed by Measure Z when evaluating such applications. In reality, this expansion equates to bringing another pot business to town and should be counted as such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next is Becky Rapp. Go ahead, Becky.
Good evening. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a parent and community member representing the parent community who are deeply concerned with the negative impacts of marijuana dispensaries in our community and especially on our youth. I'd like to share, thank the sheriff for his detailed presentation and for their efforts in monitoring marijuana businesses. I also thank you for discussing increasing retail business expansion fees. Increasing fees can be a crucial part in educating and protecting our community. It is concerning, however, that the city is considering to allow marijuana outlets to expand. As a parent, this idea of expanding marijuana outlets is upsetting. Are the dispensaries we already have not enough to service the City of Vista? Anyone can get pot delivered to their door any time of any day. It seems that when it comes to a marijuana retail store, more research and information should be gathered before granting them expansion. Expanding only allows for more inventory to be brought into our city, leading to more of an overabundance of pot. According to a recent Sandag report showing 20 years of substance abuse monitoring data in California, drug use is up among teens another 5% from last year. We have learned that marijuana is the drug of choice for youth, and 57% of youth interviewed tested positive for marijuana. 91% of youth interviewed said marijuana is easy to obtain, and 58% of youth reported that marijuana is the first drug they tried. What can we learn from this? We do not need to expand pot shops in our city. We need to take time and educate our teens and parents during such uncertain times. And teens forced to stay home as, home, as parents, we urge you to please consider limiting any marijuana expansion into our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it for the public speaker. So we'll close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay, so comments from the council. Councilmember Green.
Um, I just wanted to thank staff for their work on this and everything that they're doing to implement the will of the voters here in Vista. I know that it's new, uncharted territory, and we don't really know what's going to be asked of us and kind of how to go about it. So I really do appreciate it. In regards to this fee, I actually was contacted by the business owner. It is a dispensary here in my district. And initially, they were looking at what they thought were excessive fees. And just recently, you might have seen the story that ran how we're charging $28,000 for the annual audit fee based off of staff time. And I assured the dispensaries in the area that that was based off of staff time. And I feel like this particular fee coming in at $391, as opposed to $10,000 or $20,000, does truly show that we're doing the research needed to make sure that we are only charging our business owners for what we need to charge them for. And I think that's a great thing that we're doing here in the city, approaching it with an unbiased approach. There are obviously successful businesses that our residents are using. The tax revenue that's been generated has been excellent. And the focused impacts that we were concerned with, I really feel like they haven't been hitting Vista as hard as the skeptics were worried about. So from a council perspective and a council member's perspective, working with local businesses and just assuring them that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing on the city side, I wanted to take that opportunity to thank you and tell you that I appreciate you. With that, I would like to close the public hearing and move that we accept staff's recommendation to implement the fee as noted in the report.
Councilmember Franklin.
Just a clarification for the public who may not be aware of what this item is exactly. This item does not authorize new locations or increase the total number of marijuana dispensaries that are permitted under the citizen-passed initiative Measure Z. This simply provides for a marijuana business authorized under Measure Z to expand within its existing footprint to an adjacent site. But it does not allow them to expand beyond the address of the initial site that they were authorized at. Is that all that correct? Does I understand it?
That is correct, yes. If you were to move away from your existing location, it would be considered a relocation. And that does trigger a much larger fee with much more significant review.
Well, I would agree with what Councilman Green said. Now, the, even those of us who didn't support Measure Z, understand that the people of Vista voted to adopt Measure Z, and we are doing our best to implement it faithfully, the will of voters, and to deal with all the business owners in our city who are operating under the auspices of the Vista Municipal Code, to treat them fairly and reasonably and to assign costs that accurately reflect staff time. So with that, I would second the motion.
Seeing no other speakers, we have most of the seconds. So we will have a roll call vote.
Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, our next public hearing is to receive testimony regarding the proposed annexation, reorganization, and assignment of a pre-zoning designation at 721 and 723 Plumosa Avenue. Public hearing is now open. Community Development Director John Conley will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they can indicate so by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentations by staff and the applicant. And so with that, I will turn it over to, not Councilmember, Community Development Director John Conley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an annexation and pre-zoning for sewer service primarily on Plumosa Avenue. Kathy, next slide, please. The project site is located on the north side of Plumosa Avenue shown here in the aerial photo. It's 0.64 acres. It consists of one legal parcel. It includes a duplex which is addressed as 721 and 723 Plumosa. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the existing unit on the left side taken from the street. And the aerial photo on the right shows the existing location of the property and the surrounding land uses. It's all single-family residential surrounding the site. It's an existing neighborhood. The city boundary is the blue line that's shown on the aerial photo. So you can see it runs along the left or south side of the property. And so this property is outside the city but directly adjacent to the city boundary. Next slide, please. The property is requesting annexation primarily for a septic system failure. The city requires the county verify that the septic system has failed when we allow for connections to our system. However, when your property is directly contiguous to the city boundary, there is a city council policy that requires annexation into the city as a requirement of sewer service. And so this property, because it is contiguous to the boundary, is being required to annex in order to connect. Next slide. When we look at annexations, we review the general plan designation to make sure that the property is consistent with the general plan. In this case, it's in a medium-low-density designation, which is a single-family designation, and it's consistent with that. Next slide. There's no zoning shown on the property in this slide because the city zoning doesn't apply yet. If the property were to annex into the city, we would apply a pre-zoning designation of R1, meaning when Lafco approves it, the property would have an R1 designation, which allows single-family uses consistent with the surrounding area. Next slide. In annexing to the city, the staff looks at a number of policies, whether or not the property's consistent with the general plan and the zoning, which it is. If the parcel is consistent with surrounding land uses, which it does, it also retains a legal non-conforming status with the duplex that's on the site, meaning that was built before the zoning was established. The request is consistent with policies in our general plan that address annexations such as annexations of islands and low-density parcels. However, when there is an annexation request submitted, the city reviews the fiscal impacts of the annexation. There's an analysis required consistent with the city council policy regarding annexations. That fiscal analysis evaluates the cost of city services for the parcel in comparison to the amount of tax revenue that the parcel would generate. And so that analysis was also run. In addition to the annexation, there was a detachment from the Vista Fire Protection District which would accompany the annexation. So it's officially referred to as a reorganization for Lafco purposes. Next slide. Fiscal impact analysis was prepared, was prepared by an outside consultant that maintains the city's fiscal impact model, David Tassigan Associates. It's provided as part of the staff report. The impact analysis evaluates the cost of public services versus the tax revenue, as I mentioned. In this case, the analysis identified a recurring annual deficit from annexation of this property of $1,211. It identified recurring annual revenues and taxation of 1,921 and recurring annual costs of $3,132. So therefore, the deficit that exists must be covered for a 40-year term in accordance with Policy 300-1. And that equates to a deficit offset payment for a 40-year term of $27,992. That number evaluates the cost of the funds being paid now versus a 40-year period out. So that is the deficit offset payment that the applicant has been asked to pay along with the annexation request. Next slide. This action was reviewed by the Planning Commission, as all annexation requests are on August 4. And they recommended unanimous approval with two commissioners at-- on August 4th and they recommended unanimous approval with two commissioners absent. That was the land use action taken by the commission. They do not look at the fiscal impacts of the annexation that's left for the council. Next slide, please. And so with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution making application to LAFCO for the subject property as well as an ordinance approving a zone change for pre-zoning to R1 for the same property, subject to the deficit offset payment that was identified. And that completes my staff presentation. I know that the applicant, Mr. Krishnan Vijay, is also here and has some slides that he wants to present to the council as well. But I'm available for any questions, Mayor. Thank you.
So would this be the time that he would, the applicant, would present his slides? Or would that be under speakers?
Normally, we hear from the applicant right now.
Okay.
Okay, good, good. Thank you, thank you so much. First of all, I'm a little nervous presenting from an audience. Mayor Ritter, Deputy Mayor Rigby, council members Franklin, Councilmember Green, and Councilmember Contreras, thank you so much for your time. As already mentioned and awarded, I know as Deputy Mayor said, the city staff have also been spectacular in working with me and helping me with collecting the information. We can go to slide number one. So this is a very simple case where I was interested in buying a property. It was last summer. The property was listed on the market. We made an offer on the property. We agreed to everything. There was something about the septic tank. We said, okay, just get the septic tank approval or whatever the certification of the septic tank. And the sellers went through, they went through a process for about four months and finally came and said, no, we're not able to do it. Then I did some due diligence, I estimated some costs and went in and said, okay, these are the costs that we estimate and these are the agencies that I need to talk to. And we made an offer, we bought the property, it closed in December. You can go to the next slide, next couple of slides. Some of you have seen this before. So after we have bought it, there was, with the heavy rains, there was a lot of impact, had to empty the septic tank. These are all the repairs and the costs that I've already incurred in the property from the time that we occupied. I think this December 4th was the date that we closed and by the time that we are appearing for the Planning Commission, these are the amount I've spent. If you go to the next slide, it talks about the expenses that are going to come up. And these are all expenses that I had researched and I had put together. And there's a couple of other fees that are not mentioned here or, you know, something like an overage, I've not included that here. And a City of Vista trust fee, I believe that's supposed to be presented before we connect and then it's refunded at the end of the construction. Can go to the next slide. In the interest of time I'm walking through, I'll be happy to go through it. So there was, when I met with some of you, you asked Krishnan, what did you, what type of credit did you get? And so going through the costs and everything, I got a seller credit of about $75,000. And with that, I thought, well, we are going to be in good shape, plus minus a little bit. And now if you look at overall, I'm still not halfway through and I'm already about 12K under. Can you go to the next slide, please? And the financial model was done by DTA and I spoke to them as well. And first of all, it was a big shock when they said, Krishnan, you're in the zone of about $28,000 that you owe to the city. Because this was not something that was mentioned to me, this was not something that I anticipated. And then when I probed a little bit into the financial model, I spent some time with them. And if its model is a single-family with about 3.2 per household, the revenue is 1368, expenses are 1567, the deficit is 199. And so the total 40-year payment would be about $4,600. And one of the other things that happened, and similarly I did with a duplex 2-2 and a duplex 2.5, 2.5 and a duplex 3-2-3-2. And as Mr. John Conley mentioned, the model is basically at the duplex 3-2-3-2, shows a deficit of 1211 per year and $27,991 is what's due. One of the other things that the property suffers from, or any property that's not a new development suffers from, is the fact that if it's a new development, there's nothing there for you. The city gets property tax in lieu of the vehicle license fee of about $500. So if you apply that, the top two models are already giving a credit, a surplus to the city. And because it's an existing annexation, that's not even considered and therefore the top two scenarios about turn into a surplus, but that credit is not even given to the financial model. Can you go to the last slide, please? And so just as I mentioned, it is a very simple goal of ours to buy Vista and based on, we gave every effort for the seller to close everything. It would have been a normal close. However, after the seller spent a few months, they could not reach, get the septic tank approval nor any alternate plan. And then I'm pursuing this. And so my appeal to you is, the financial model, as you can see, is very broad and punitive. And as the map showed, the property is abetting the city property and it is, the property that's north of me and the property that's north of me is already on septic. The property that's across on Plumosa on the south side is on septic. All the properties on the, if it's north, on the west side are all on septic sewer as well, right? All the properties are on me on Buena Vista Sewer. And also, as I mentioned in the opening slide, Roger, one of our staff member, wrote a letter in 1994, Mr. Paul Farley, who was the owner at that time. And since then, the city and the county has urged the owners to change it. So I'm trying to right something that's been wrong. And I'm also not a developer, I'm an individual. So, and you know, as I mentioned, the city has not imposed this fee on anyone. So this is a complete surprise, it'll be shock for me. So my appeal to you is, please waive this fee. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, so I'll go back to the council here and see if there's anybody that has any questions or statements or, nobody has anything to say? Ms. Ms. Green.
I'll break the ice, all right. I do want to make it clear that I have met with the property owner extensively. I've also done a lot of research on this particular issue. Is it fair to say that the deficit offset payment wasn't made aware to the property owner prior to the close of his transaction in December of 2019, Mr. Conley?
Correct.
Okay, so this is a charge that he didn't find out about until after close?
Yes.
All right, one thing I do want to say to the property owners, thank you. Thank you for being transparent. You didn't have to tell us that the seller gave you $75,000 and quite frankly, there was no way for us to find out. So you telling us that the seller gave you some money and to that tune, that you were given a good credit for it. However, I do see the numbers and it looks like they're going to be upwards of $100,000 just to connect your property to the local sewer, which that $20,000 extra dollars that you were made unaware of until after close is kind of that gap in funding that you're looking at. So, you know, initially, I was skeptical, I wanted to see what type of credit you had given. I also wanted to see if this would set a precedent. And in speaking with our Director of Planning, Mr. Conley, this issue has only come before the city council one time in the last 20 years. Is that correct, Mr. Conley?
That's correct.
Okay, so the chances of us setting a precedent of waiving fees for anything in particular is not something that I'm too worried about. I am one to admit when, you know, you didn't get something quick enough from a city, I also want to be a property owner friendly city and I feel like I've reached what I consider a fair solution. One question that I did have for you, Mr. Conley, is when you gave your presentation, you said in pre-zoning with LAFCO, you were having it annexed as an R1 property, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, isn't this property considered R2 since it's a two-to-four unit property? Or is that still considered an R1 zoning?
It's got an existing duplex on the property that's considered legal non-conforming. So the county zoning only allows one single-family unit as well, but because there's a legal non-conforming duplex on the property, the city recognizes that. It still comes in as an R1 zone because that's consistent with the general plan and the surrounding zone.
Okay, so we're accepting it as an R1, but we're making him, we're charging him for the R2 and the county doesn't look at it as an R2. We all look at it as an R1 or SFR, right?
Right, we would not want to zone it for multifamily because it wouldn't be consistent with any of the surrounding lots. He can enjoy the existing two units, but he can't add more.
Exactly. So in knowing all that, I get all of that and I feel like, number one, it's a benefit for Mr. Vijay, hopefully I'm saying that right? Because he will be able to add additional accessory dwelling units on that. If that's annexed into our city, it helps us with our RENA numbers and getting additional units. But one thing that I saw in his presentation, and I don't know, let me see which page this was on and maybe if you want to put it up, page 1, 2, 3, 4. Page 5 of Mr. Vijay's presentation had a couple financial models up there and it had a financial model for a single-family dwelling, for a duplex that was 2 and 2, and for the other ones, which I felt the fees were pretty high for. And looking at all these fees, I personally would recommend accepting staff's recommendation to annex the property, but making the deficit offset payment be in line with the lowest fee on that as a duplex. I believe that Mr. Vijay knew that he was purchasing a duplex, so to think that you were going to get the $45,99 fee would, in my opinion, not be practical. But thinking you were only going to pay $82,28, and mind you, this is just a fee, an offset deficit. This has nothing to do with city plan checks or staff time. This is just a fee, you know, as far as deficit offset. And I know how it's calculated, but looking at the square footage of this property, the footprint that it sits in, I really think it's more of a standard 2-2 duplex. And that fee of $82,28, $86, in my opinion, would be an acceptable fee. With charging that fee as opposed to the $27,992 fee, that would save you, gosh, I don't know, a little over $20,000 bucks or just under $20,000. And I think that that would mean that the seller credit that was given to you was adequate to at least accomplish what you wanted. So with that, I would listen to what the rest of my council said. I don't necessarily want to offer a motion without speaking with them, but where I personally am at with it right now is that I would definitely approve the annexation, the presentation to LAFCO, but I would say the charge of $82,28 is much more acceptable in my opinion than a charge of $27,991. So as far as my council members go, that's where I stand. I'd love to hear from you guys personally. Thank you.
Anybody out there? Any other council members? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. Mr. Vijay did not know about the additional fees until after the closing. Why, where was that ball dropped at?
Mr. Vijay's, the identification of the fiscal impact analysis wasn't brought until after he had submitted an annexation application and we were well down the road. Truthfully, the staff didn't identify it upfront, frankly, because we have run these models for numerous other annexations for single-family homes and we rarely if ever see a deficit. So we frankly didn't anticipate what threw us off here was the fact that there's a duplex on the property and that's really what generates the deficit.
Okay, so that kind of was on our end of things, so. And then Mr. Vijay, you had commented that you are not a developer, so, and this is a duplex. Are you living on the property or intend to live on the property in one of the halves of the duplex?
I, yeah, can you hear me? Yeah. No, I'm not living there now. I have a kid who is in high school right now in Torrey Pines High School, but it is a place that we plan to move into.
Okay. Do you own other properties that you rent out?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the only two questions I had. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Contreras.
In listening to the presentation, you know, I met with Mr. Vijay before. I am totally in support of the annexation. I'm still on the fence about waiving any part of the fee, so I would like to hear a little bit more from my colleagues, but I do believe that the annexation is good, so.
Okay, I'm looking to see. Ms. Ms. Franklin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
The 3-2-3-2 models, that relates to the DU's per acre?
That relates to the number of occupants in each household assumed in the model.
Okay, and how do we assess the number of occupants? Is that based on the number of bedrooms?
Yeah, each single-family unit is assessed a 3.2 variable based on average across the county occupancy of single-family homes. So they just use an average for that number and that's 3.2.
Okay, and do we have a history of assessing an average of two occupants for other condominium or duplex properties?
No.
Have we used a lower?
We typically use.
Number anywhere?
No, typically use the average of 3.2 or whatever the countywide average is at the time that the fiscal impact model is run.
So here's my concern. What is the effect of making an exception for one property the next time somebody wants to annex in 100 duplex units or build? Are we, are, you know, are we creating a precedent that we're going to have to honor or at least feel obliged to honor for a future development?
So in terms of precedent setting, you know, the reason that this applicant is being required to annex in order to get sewer services, they're directly adjacent to the city boundary. We have very few situations where we have a failing septic system that requires an existing property to annex and is adjacent to the city boundary and so also gets the fiscal impact analysis. Normally, if you're a property that's not adjacent to the city boundary and you want to annex and you have a failing septic, we allow it through an agreement and you promise to annex at a later time. We have a number of those out there, but this particular situation is forced into it because of dual policies, one requiring the annexation and one requiring the fiscal impact analysis. As far as precedent goes, if we were going to do an analysis of a number of duplex that were new development, it's highly unlikely that those would generate a deficit because they'd have a much higher tax base and we'd have a much higher amount of fees that we would collect from those properties. So very rarely do new developments fail with fiscal impact. It's more a problem for existing properties. So in terms of precedent, no, at the staff level, we don't feel like it's a huge precedent only because we have very few of these situations where all of those factors converge. We have a failing septic, it's on a county property that's within Buena, it's directly adjacent to the city boundary and has to annex. Those situations are few and far between in my experience here.
And could you give me the final assessment again on, do we trust the model? Why do we believe that a lower amount than what the model predicts is fair to the city for future costs?
Well, we trust the model. The model says, I mean, it's a conservative model, so it looks at the cost of services and it looks at, you know, the tax revenue that this property is generating based on an assumption that there's 3.2 residents living in each of the two units. If the council believes that there's probably not going to be 3.2 residents living in each of the two units, then they have the ability under the policy to reduce or waive the payment, but that's at the council's discretion. From the staff perspective, we always take the most conservative approach to present you with financial information and that's the approach that's taken here.
And how many bedrooms in each of these two duplexes?
Krishnan?
Yeah, two in three, sir. Two in one and three in the other. It was one single-family long time ago and somebody put a kitchen and went through the split somewhere, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So probably you're going to have four occupants in one and three in the other would be logical. Or, I mean, it might be less than that, but that's a reasonable number of people to occupy that number of, as if you have a husband and wife or two people in the master bedroom and you have, you know, one person in each of the other bedrooms. So I don't know, I'm, you know, I, we're facing another problem in the city right now where, you know, sort of decisions that were made 50 years ago are impinging on our fin- on our finances now and we're considering, you know, what we're going to do about that. So it's sort of a series of, of more decisions about how we're going to conduct ourselves financially. So I want to hear from everybody else.
Hey, so who have we not heard from? Councilmember Green, yeah.
Just had a question for you, Mr. Conley. Since we're going to charge this homeowner as a duplex, but the county won't recognize it as a duplex, we can't zone it as a duplex, he can't build more units like he's supposed to based, like we're charging the guy twenty-eight thousand dollars for something we're telling the county and we're accepting as zoned as a forty-six hundred dollar fee. So for me, it kind of feels like even at eighty-two hundred, I felt like I was charging him a little much because I'm not annexing his property as a duplex. I'm not annexing it like that. So, and the other thing is, you know, study-wise, I mean, we've always calculated duplexes at three-point-two. Why would it, why would we be surprised with this figure if we've always calculated it this way? That, that's my question because I feel like we probably calculated it as the way we were annexing it, which is why it wasn't an issue. And then when we realized, hey, it's really duplex, we messed ourself up. Our fault, not his fault, but please enlighten me on that.
Yes, we, well, frankly, we haven't had a duplex go through this annexation process as an existing unit, not since I've been here in a long time. Majority of these are single-family homes.
Okay. And am I safe to say that if his property was seven, let's see, what's his address now? So he's seven twenty-three, I don't even have it right in front of me here what his address is, but let's just hypothetically say he was two doors down and he wasn't landlocked to the city, he wouldn't, he'd pay zero dollars, right? And just a letter that says, hey, maybe someday I'll pay you. Isn't that how it works?
He would be allowed to annex in a future date with a letter of intent that indicates that he'd be required to annex when the city boundary got close enough. But the current policy that's in place.
I get it.
Would still require that fiscal analysis at that time.
When you actually hit his property at that time. But we would probably provide it to him right away and we'd probably annex it similar to the other properties around it and it would be something he'd be able to prep for as opposed to something sprung on him at the eleventh hour.
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Franklin.
So did, did our staff provide a lesser number at some point or give reason to believe that the, the fees would be less because of our oversight in the fact that this is a duplex?
There was no lesser number given, but we did indicate at, at the initial stage of application that we didn't expect that there was going to be additional fees beyond the normal annexation fees.
And so you thought, and, and you, you, you believed originally that you were annexing a single-family property?
I think the initial thought from the planning staff when the application came in was yes, that this was a single-family property. We didn't get into the duplex component until we started the fiscal analysis.
And had we run the model as a single-family, the, the amount would have been how much?
Around forty-five hundred dollars, if I remember. That, that's in the slide that just felt that's had up earlier.
It's forty-five ninety-nine.
You know, I'm, I'm inclined, I'm inclined, if Councilman Green wanted to make a motion to, in this one case, if we can, if we can do this, if we could just cut the number in half, that we're asking for twenty-eight thousand, how much?
Twenty-seven nine ninety-one, I believe.
So half of that would be thirteen nine ninety-five. Councilman Green, would you offer a motion to set the fee for this annexation, the, the deficit charge to thirteen nine ninety-five?
My only question on that, Mr. Conley, is that does our fee structure have to match an existing financial model fee structure? That's why I offered the eighty-two twenty-eight, is I felt like it was the in-between number based off the current model. I don't know, I'm asking you.
No. The council is free to decide what they want to accept as the deficit offset payment per the policy.
Okay. And you would be uncomfortable with the eighty-two twenty-eight? You're more comfortable with the thirteen? Councilman Franklin?
Well, it is a duplex and it probably is going to have, you know, reasonably, the three-point-two number is not unreasonable.
Okay.
You know, and I, I mean, I, I think there are some unusual things about this particular circumstance.
Yeah.
Maybe some, some wrong understandings going into it. You know, I, I, I would, I would want to hear what our colleagues think about that idea, but if that idea was amenable, I, I think I'm, I think I'm mostly, you know, all the way to agreeing to that kind of a concept, so.
I, I, I have a, I have a question and then I'll, and I'll get you a council member. So how, how large is a lot? Is it, is it like an acre lot? Is it a large lot?
Point six-four acres, Mayor.
How many?
Point six-four.
So could he, so if we test this, then he could put another ADU on that property, is that correct? And that would be for going to our sewer service also?
Yes, he would be permitted to build an ADU on the property that could connect to the sewer system.
Could he put two ADUs on there?
State law may allow for that. I'd have to look into that.
You could put one ADU.
For sure, I'm not sure about two.
You don't need to put one on there, okay. Okay, Councilmember Contreras, I think I saw your hand up.
Um, you know what? I'm, I'm definitely receptive to lowering some of the fee. I just, just because it does seem like this is, you know, partially, I mean, unintentionally, maybe a little bit of, you know, miscommunication and that we didn't know certain things. So I, I am open to reducing the fee, but it's a hard one to figure out how much to reduce it, just because there could potentially be a good amount of people living there. So I don't know. This is a tough one.
So are you waiving it, Mr. Councilmember Green? Oh, oh wait, let's go Deputy Mayor and then I'll go back to you, Councilmember, okay? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the question was brought up about ADUs on the property. And I don't know if Mr. Vijay has any intention of doing ADUs now or in the future. But being a property owner and a landlord, you know, is something that definitely we have to consider in the future. So for each hookup, like if they do an accessory dwelling unit, how much would that be charged to, what are the fees for an ADU hooking into the system?
There's no connection fee for an ADU per state law. It's only service fees that are charged annually.
Okay. So those would not be considered the same fees that we're asking here?
No, he has to pay connection fees that are separate, fees that are about six thousand dollars per unit. So for the two units, he pays that. This is a deficit offset above that.
Right. Okay. This is a hard one because I, I did meet with Mr. Vijay as well, I think all of us did. And I'm, I'm not particularly inclined in passing these costs off to the rest of the residents in the community. And if this was something that we knew was coming, it should have been part of his investigation into whether or not he wanted this property and he wanted to have it hooked up to the sewer system here. So I, I'm not inclined in, in doing that, but hearing the fact that the information for the amount of money that it was going to cost was not information that he was given prior to the closing of the sale, that does give a little bit of heartburn for us and, for me. And I want to, I want to do something on that, but waiving the fee entirely, I think, is something that we cannot do. I also don't want to set a precedent for people that, oh, we, you, we didn't know this because, and, and then they want something else. So this is a, a real sticky wicket we have here with us. So, yeah, I'm, I'm agreeable to a lesser amount. I'm just not sure how far less I want to go. I don't think Mr. Vijay commented on splitting the difference and just cutting it in half. I probably could be agreeable to that. I see he's shaking his head no.
Can I, can I please speak?
Madam Mayor.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Is it okay with everybody? Is it okay if he speaks, everyone? Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not aware of the protocol, so I'm, I'm really apologize. I mean, all of us, if, all of my neighbors there have talked to Jim, talked to Dave, Susan and Brew, all of them, we are all single-family. That, that, how it had come in is how it is right now. I'm not planning on putting an ADU anytime soon. I just want to make sure that I'm able to connect to the sewer. That's my, that's my only requirement. The other thing is, if you looked at, looked at the cost that had come in, I had put some numbers through, after talking with the city and after talking to LAFCO, and overages are not counted in at this point. And any surprise fees that come in are not counted. And I'm counting, you know, those may be something like hundred, two hundred dollars because in a LAFCO, they say you need a meets and bounds document or something. But twenty-eight is a big shock. So all of you know, it's almost more than fif, nearly fifty percent, the whole hit. Please, like twenty-eight is a big amount. I'm sorry that we are in this situation, but if I had known, perhaps I would have, I, I don't know, I, I don't know, we would have dealt with it differently if I had known before. I'm, 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 please, do the best you can. I, I'd say, I, I also don't want it to be on the city. I've never believed in it. I, I went through it and as you can see in my slide number four, I'm paying for the two units, six thousand one hundred and forty-three, six thousand one hundred and forty-three, even though it's going to be one line that's connecting into the city. Because that's how it's, and Roger appraised me of that way before, right? Even though it's one line that's going to come from the lot to the, to the, to the main line in Plumosa, we're paying six thousand one hundred and forty-three times two, right? So I'm doing all of that. All that is, is, and I want to be fair to the city as well, right? But this twenty-eight is, is a huge shock. Please consider, please waive it. If not, I, I, you know, make it very small. I cannot, please, I cannot do a halfway.
Madam Mayor, may I finish?
Yes, definitely.
So you might not have done yourself any favor with the comment. I'm just going to put it right out there. When you said not looking to do an ADU anytime soon, that did not pass me. So, and you are a landowner, a property owner, a landlord with property other places. And that's a concern as well because if you're going to put an additional ADU, I, I know that we talked about the fees for the ADU and how the process is different. But your duplex, and it's been referenced a couple of times, is, is just a single-family home. It's not, it's a duplex. You can have two different families living in there and you can have, you know, all these people. And I think Councilman Franklin brought that up. So I think the best I would be willing to go is with Councilman Green's proposal and splitting, splitting the fee in half of what it's recommended. Because I think we have to take a little bit of responsibility in this not being disclosed completely prior to the closing. And that probably would have made a difference in, in that deal. So if, if, those are my comments. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Does anyone else? Councilmember Franklin and then I think Joe, Councilmember Green also. Do you have Franklin first? Franklin first.
What, what would the deficit have been had this been a single-family unit of three-point-two occupancy?
Forty-five ninety-nine.
Well, just, just real quick, Joe, I'm just trying to understand the model. Why does it, so if there were two single-family homes on this lot and it was eighty-nine hundred or whatever, why does this balloon so much just because it's a duplex? I mean, if, if literally he was to cut a, you know, the connecting wall out and separate these two properties, then it becomes, why, why does our model do that?
The financial model increases based on the number of occupants. So every resident has a cost to them.
Right.
So a single, a, a single-family home's three-point-two, a duplex is, in his scenarios that he put forward, there's a four, there's a five, and there's a six-point-four. There's, you know, two in each, two and a half in each, or three-point-two in each.
Oh, so I, I was looking at that slide where we were looking at the three-two or the two and a half or the two. But I'm sorry, so what is our, what does our model assume for occupancy for, for this particular unit that's being annexed?
We assume three-point-two for each unit, so total of six-point-four people.
So six-point, but here's my question. If there were two single-family homes, each with three-point-two people, but they were on separate pads, you, you following me on that?
Separate lots?
Okay, yeah, let's say he did a lot split and let's say he cut the building in half and he built it into two separate units. You fol, you follow?
Uh huh.
So then if he was annexing two single-family homes, each at three-point-two occupancy, what will we be charging him right now?
Most likely the exact amount that we're asking him.
And why, why is that? Councilman Green disagrees.
Yeah, you would actually be charging him nine thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars, which is two single-family dwellings, offset deficit payments of forty-five ninety-nine per unit. And I think that's what you're asking, councilmember, is why is it, why is it forty-five ninety-nine for a three-two house, but it's twenty-seven thousand for two-three-two condos, basically?
I don't think, I don't think Mr. Conley's in agreement. I want to know why.
I would need to get the financial model person to answer that question. I, I honestly don't know. Mr. Johnson, do you know?
No, I don't have the details on that just, but as Mr. Conley said, it's based on per person and so.
But, but follow me on this for a second. So if it was a single-family home and it was three-point-two people occupants, are, are, is it that our stock fee is the thirty-nine hundred dollars, but then we would do a deficit study on that and that could raise it up substantially? Is that, is that the case?
Your stock, I'm not sure, I'm not following your stock fee. What do you mean by that?
Okay, so the three-point-two fee, again, we're going to go back to the scenario where there's a single-family home.
Yes.
Not a duplex. Three-point-two occupancy, what will we be charging him?
The forty-five ninety-nine per the slide that was up there. Kathy, can you put that other slide?
Yes, slide six.
But then because there's a wall connecting the two properties, it goes to twenty-eight thousand?
And, and this is where I'm saying, what Councilman Green is saying is the math doesn't add up because if it was two single-family homes, it would be nine, ninety-two hundred dollars, right?
Yeah.
But instead, it's two duplexes or duplex at twenty-eight thousand. So that's, where's that math coming from? And that's, I'm not sure why that calculation is made differently for a duplex of three-point-two.
Councilman Green, I second your motion for the eighty-two twenty-eight because I, I'm not hearing any information that's explaining to me if this was two single-family homes on separate lots, it sounds like he'd be getting charged the forty-five ninety-nine twice.
Yep.
So forty-five ninety-nine dot eighty-four times two is ninety-one ninety-nine sixty-eight. So i, if your motion is to set the fee for this annexation for the deficit charge at ninety-one ninety-nine dot sixty-eight, then that seems to me to be consistent because if this property owner was annexing two properties, each single-family, we're being told by staff right now that the fee would be four thousand five hundred ninety-nine eighty-four each.
Yes.
So, and, and I'm hearing no countervening logic from anybody, although there's still time to weigh in.
Councilman, when you look at the model, forty percent of the model is based on the property taxes that are assessed or that will be generated to the city. And the remainder amount is a variety of factors, about twenty-five, twenty-six percent is based on sales tax on, on a per capita, meaning the three-point-two, on what they're going to spend in the city and what comes back to the city. And I think that's where the difference is.
Is the property tax on a duplex lower than a single-family home? Isn't it just based on its assessed valuation?
Yeah. And in this case, it's six hundred and fifty thousand, I believe.
Well, I, I hate to say this, but that still doesn't countervene the point I'm making, does it?
I'm just, I'm letting you know what the, the basis of the, the charges are for, the, the cost differential and a majority of it is property tax, but then it gets into, on a per capita basis, that three-point-two persons or that six-point-four, how much they are going to provide to the city. And that, and that's part of the difference.
I, I guess I could understand that if we were talking about two single-family homes, it would be a higher tax base. You'd be looking at one-point-two million dollars of assessed value rather than six. That, Joe, that does make sense when you think about that. So now, now we're back to the cutting it in half number. Okay, I'm done. Okay, I'm done.
Madam Mayor.
I'm muted. Councilman Green.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is my thing. For us to speculate on what the value of half a duplex on a third of a lot with a failing septic system would be worth, and for us to base our number off of that seems ludicrous, all right? I do not want to get too far into the woods. If this is a three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family house, and there's another three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family house, both on a third of an acre, and they both have five kids and they all live in the house, we're charging them nine thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents for those two properties to tie into the sewer. Now, if they're these little dinky properties with fail septic system, maybe they would only be worth three seventy-five each. I mean, I'm not an appraiser. Um, I haven't done a valuation check on what a house that's gotta tie into the sewer and replace it is, but what we're getting property tax-wise is what the market fetched for the property. So us to say, hey, what would it be if we split the lots and put two properties on it and all that stuff? If he splits these lots, he has to pay an additional forty-five ninety-nine for his new lot and whatever new permit fees as well. So make sure you know that, is that if he decides to split them, on top of this ninety-two hundred we're charging right now, he will pay another forty-five ninety-nine. So, before we speak anymore about it, I think it's time to make a motion, see if we can get a vote on it. I really feel like, as far as the compromise for the city, we initially calculated it as a single family. It's not a single family, it's a duplex. So, the compromise would be eighty-two twenty-eight, but adding it as two single families, it'd be ninety-two hundred. So in my opinion, I'm fair. I think that's great. I would move that we accept staff's recommendation to annex the property as presented with the total deficit offset cost to the homeowner totaling nine thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents. Can I get a second?
And I have a question. On the yearly sewer fees, does he pay one yearly sewer fee or does he pay two for, one for each, for the duplex, one for each side? Does he pay two sewer fees every year or does he pay just one sewer fee?
Two. He pays two sewer fees. And this gentleman also paid two connection fees for only one pipe going to his house. So if you want to get him for an extra six grand, know that we charged him an extra six grand for the one pipe coming in, even though it's the two residents. So, I feel like we're getting, uh, you know, fifteen thousand extra dollars than we would from a single family property with this offset fee and that additional sewer charge with the recurring sewer fees. So, anyway, my motion stands. If I get a second, great. If not, that's where I'm at.
But he's putting, he's putting two houses of stuff into the one pipe. That makes any sense. Hey, not seeing a second. Where, Councilmember Franklin?
You know, I, I've got the, uh, agenda item up here, but I don't seem to be able to find the presentation. What, what's the current, uh, fee that we're asking for? Twenty-seven thousand?
Nine ninety-one.
Nine ninety-one. So if we divide that in half, that brings us back to the thirteen nine ninety-five fifty. Councilman Green, you want to make a new motion?
My only question with that is, is Mr. Vijay's already said he can't afford half, so I, I don't know that it'd even be worth making the motion. With the money he was provided from the seller, he can, don't annex into the city, put yourself a seepage pit in your property, run your duplex in the county and save some money because if you can't afford the, the fees at this point, that's where I'd be at. So, no, man, he said he couldn't afford it, so I don't even know if that motion would make any sense unless he changes his mind.
Mr. Vijay, uh, would you, what would your, uh, uh, action be if we were to set the fee at thirteen nine ninety-five?
I don't know, sir. I came in with, uh, with the hope that the whole thing will be waived because I was, you know, as, as I went through the whole motion and all the expenses that I presented. But if not, at least the two that, 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 any of the bottom two in the model, financial model.
Okay.
Uh, please, please, thank you.
Well, I, I, there was no support for the, uh, nine thousand number, so I, I would offer a motion to split the fee in half. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Vijay will have to decide what's in his financial best interest. But, uh, you know, our taxpayers that live in the city, uh, are taxed to take care of this system. Uh, the reality is, and the reason I'm arriving at this higher number than the two single families, is, is you know that if this was two single family lots, the properties would each be worth substantially more. And the property tax base would be higher. And our property tax does support our sewer system, as does our sewer fee. And that's, I'm finally under, God, I got all through it, Mr. Conley. And I, and I understand now why the duplex is more expensive because it doesn't bring the tax base along with it. That makes total sense. Uh, you know, we, we try and set these costs fairly to represent actual costs. They're huge, they're burdensome, but they represent the actual cost of what it takes. Uh, you know, to carry the effluents away from our homes, somebody's gotta do that, it's gotta be done somehow, and someone has gotta pay for it. And that someone is all of us that live in the city. And so if we allow people to annex in and access our system, but not pay the actual ch- cost, that actual cost is to be absorbed by somebody, and that somebody is the people who elected us. So for that reason, uh, I think we are offering a major concession. And, and honestly, the only reason that I'm even willing to do that is because I'm, I'm seeing some daylight in staff saying there may have been some misunderstanding. Uh, and we feel that this is a righteous thing to do. For that, uh, I'd offer the motion at thirteen nine ninety-five.
I would second that. Okay, so we have a motion and two seconds. Motion by Councilmember Frank and a second by Councilmember Rigby, or Deputy Mayor Rigby. So, um, do we have any speakers on this?
No, we do not have any speakers.
I don't know if we ever asked that. Okay, so then with that, then I will, I think.
Joe has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Green, I didn't see you waving.
No problem, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank my council so much and Councilmember Franklin for even coming up with the suggestion. Like I said, I, I didn't offer the motion because Mr. Vijay said he couldn't afford it. So, I really appreciate you making the motion, Mr. Vijay, saving thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars in fees. I hope you do realize that by us council passing this, that's not, that's, you don't only get deals when you come to a city. So, thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars in fees is bending over. So, I appreciate you guys doing it and, uh, you know, helping Mr. Vijay out. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Thank you all very much, first of all, for giving time earlier and for this. I never wanted to freeload on the city. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay, our city clerk will do a roll call vote, please.
All right, thank you. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contras?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, so next, we have, um, we have three discussion items this evening. The first one, D one, is our Paseo Santa Fe Gateway Arches. And Councilmember Green asked for this to be put on the agenda, so I'll ask him to introduce the item. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. So I'll turn that over to Councilmember Green.
All right, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. So, uh, good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor and my fellow coun- fellow council members. I bring this discussion item before you tonight, not as an item to divide, but rather an item to unify. Since we are now at the completion of this project, after over twenty years of planning, I feel like it's our responsibility to look at these gateway signs one last time, take into consideration the opinions of our citizens, and make the best decision for our city. I'm not asking by any means to do away with the Santa, Paseo Santa Fe corridor name. The thought and work of councils past to rebrand and design this corridor was a great thought and a huge improvement to our community. What I am asking is that we consider if the gateway arches encompassing this corridor are best designed as-is, designed with the wording Vista Prominent on top with Paseo Santa Fe below, or designed to read Welcome to Vista with Paseo Santa Fe below. We have all already allocated the funding for the construction of the gateway arch, so we're already building it. This discussion is solely to determine the final design and approve any costs associated with the decision to change if made tonight. I prepared a slideshow with a good amount of information, as well as an actual sign design before us. These designs are easily changed and are currently on standby to be constructed upon our decision. I ask that you approach this decision with an open mind and know that we're not discounting the work of past councils. We're simply reviewing it at the time of construction completion to ensure it is what's best for our current council, community, and citizens at this time. I appreciate and admire the work that each of you do, and I'm truly looking forward to this discussion. So, with that, here is my slideshow. Uh, we're gonna start, uh, next slide, please, Kathy. We're gonna start just with signs around the county. I just wanted to put them up. And I definitely wanted to acknowledge that there are city signs and there are corridor signs around our county. I feel like the signs that were built for corridors were made because the corridors wanted the signs made, not the signs to make the corridors, which I kind of felt like is how Paseo Santa Fe was initially designed. Um, send it to the next slide for me, please. Um, there's three options to choose from as far as our, um, gateway arch signs go. Um, the Vista, um, Prominent above the top with Paseo Santa Fe below, Welcome to Vista with Paseo Santa Fe below, and then the current sign design, which is Paseo Santa Fe with Vista below. You'll notice that the marquee on top of each sign just has the hummingbird and we have done away with the flower on top of that. In two thousand sixteen, prior to me being elected, Paseo Santa Fe was unveiled. And I remember the excitement as a resident, that a new city sign was coming, and I actually was in Costa Rica and I watched it live on Facebook be unveiled. I was so excited. And, uh, once it was unveiled, it was mixed reaction. Some people were super excited, some people were super bummed. Um, there's a few articles that I referenced in my slideshow here that you guys probably clicked through when you were doing the research here. Um, more than three thousand people almost immediately signed a petition asking for the wording to be changed because Vista wasn't on there anywhere. Um, and the initial arch back in two thousand sixteen cost a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Um, just wanted to throw that number out there. There's a couple quotes that were in these newspaper articles that I just put up that I know you probably read before, that were just people saying, hey, um, I'm a proud Vista resident. I was heartbroken. The sign didn't say Vista anywhere. So after that, our city council, go to the next, uh, slide for me, please, Kathy. Um, the sign was changed. You had an immediate meeting and there were probably a bunch of speakers and it was decided that we were gonna add Vista just below. So you'll see the initial sign on the previous slide, and then the new sign has Vista real small, um, underneath. Now that passed at a four-one vote. And the, the one vote that didn't pass was, uh, Councilmember Franklin, who, uh, kind of slowed down and said, whatever decision we make here, this is hopefully gonna last for a hundred plus years and we want to leave it with a lasting memory that was done in cooperation with the residents. And, uh, it just was done with the Vista. We had some people who were semi-happy, some people weren't. As you know, eventually phases burn out and the outrage and the pitchforks go away. Um, but every resident I've spoken with over the last four years always has a comment about something about the sign, which is why in October, we decided to make, uh, little changes as well. Go to the next page here. So, knowing that at the end of November, we're gonna be building another sign, we're gonna do another unveiling. We're gonna stand u- underneath this and say, hey, we're the council that completed this project and this is what we've done. Um, all I wanted to do is put it out there to Vistans one last time and get some input. And I feel like this is the last meeting, which it is, that we would even have time to change the sign. And, uh, you know, I'm a Vista guy. I've lived here my entire life. I love Vista and I would love to have a sign that says Vista. But without leading anybody on social media, I just posed the question. Tuesday, eight twenty-five at five-thirty, we have a council meeting. On the agenda, we're discussing changing the Paseo Santa Fe sign to say Vista or Welcome to Vista and changing the hummingbirds. Signs will match. If you live in Vista and have an opinion, comment or email your comment to Public Comments at City of Vista. Now, I know we got a lot of public comments. I read tons of them. I'm sure you read tons of them. Um, through social media, through my, my council Facebook page, which it actually tracks analytics, and I have eighteen hundred and sixty-nine followers on that. I got thirty-four reactions, fifty-one comments, and forty-seven shares. Facebook said we reached six thousand people and had sixteen hundred unique engagements. Now, on my personal page, which the majority of my friends are Vistans, man, I've known them all for a really long time, um, out of thirty-seven hundred friends and four thousand plus followers, got a hundred and fifty-four reactions, two hundred and twenty-four comments, and thirty-nine shares, estimated twelve thousand people reached three thousand engagements. Across all those platforms, we had two hundred and thirty-one individual comments or votes, um, from actual Vistans. And there were two hundred and seventy-five total comments and votes, but I know all those people and they weren't all Vistans. So I took the ones that I knew were residents, um, that actually would have solid inputs. So the next slide for me, please, Kathy. Um, the results of the poll that I conducted was that eighty-one percent of people would like to see the sign changed to Vista with Paseo Santa Fe below. Um, fourteen percent of people want to see Welcome to Vista over the arches with Paseo Santa Fe below. And five percent of people that I polled, um, wanna leave the arches the same with Paseo Santa Fe below. I do want to say that the community as a whole loves what we've done with that area and that they all really appreciate the upgrades that we've done. They're just really, uh, looking for some, some, some city pride. And I think putting the Vista Prominent and Paseo Santa Fe below really shows us, hey, we're a great city and we have this amazing corridor that you can come visit that ties into our downtown. So we did, uh, talk about this back in October, but we didn't have, um, different options to look at, nor did we have prices. So, uh, the next slide for me right here, if you could, Kathy, is the cost to change the Paseo Santa Fe Gateway Arches. Now, if we leave everything the same, doesn't cost us anything. We build the sign, we leave it Paseo Santa Fe, we say, hey, this is what we budgeted for, this is what we're doing, and here you go, citizens. Doesn't cost us a dime. So you have that option. Option two is that we change both ar- arches to read Vista up top and Paseo Santa Fe below, just as the diagrams read. And there may be a color, I mean, I know the diagram, actually, mine's in black and white, so you see the color diagram. Um, but that's the, the Vista Arch, and then the Welcome to Vista Arch, total cost would be forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. A good amount of these fees is also the traffic control, and we don't really know exactly what it would be, but we have tied it into these fees. And this is actually the total additional cost. Um, we've already approved the construction of this new arch sign and directed staff to allocate up to three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for this gateway arch. Um, I want to go ahead and go to the next slide for me. So, as far as conclusions from just doing a little research and getting a slideshow together, I felt like on our city council meeting on October twenty-second, we were not presented with actual options or hard figures to make an informed decision on what a change to our sign would entail. I remember thinking it was gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to change the sign and that was impractical financially to change the sign. But after looking at these numbers and seeing that it's only thirty-five thousand bucks, when we have an annual budget of seventy-three million dollars and we've allocated three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to this project, it seems like something maybe, and that's my second conclusion, with three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars allocated towards this project, our thirty-five thousand dollar change may be able to fit into it. Um, once all, everything's said and done, and we haven't seen the contingencies and uh, all the rest of the monies left over at the end, and we won't know till the end, but I really feel like this ask isn't that huge of an ask, nor is it a burden on our taxpayers. Uh, the third thing is the majority of Vistans would prefer our gateway arch signs changed to read Vista, not only from my poll, but just from conversations. I've been attending a lot of events around Vista the last four years I've been elected. Anytime we talk about it, you know, they always would have rather had Vista. Nobody really thought we could make it say Vista. And I really feel like this is our opportunity if we want. The fact to change the sign to read Vista, it would be thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars more than we currently have approved. Uh, the other conclusion is the cost to change to read Welcome to Vista would be less than forty-nine thousand nine hundred more than we currently have approved. My last conclusion is that, based off of everything that we've probably all heard and everything we've all researched, more than anything, we should discuss changing the verbiage on the existing sign and new Paseo Santa Fe Gateway Arch sign to ensure that when the project is completed, the community knows we reviewed all facts, along with four years of community conversations, before the final decision was made. So, um, that's my presentation. You can go to the next slide, which basically just says, what are your questions? But more than anything, I just want to hear from my council members. And if you say, hey, I don't want to change it at all. I love Paseo Santa Fe. What's the logic from that? Who have you spoken with? Where's the support? If you want to change it to Vista, why do you like that? If you want to change it to Welcome, why do you like that? I mean, as people who have had a lot of people vote for us, I'm sure that you've gathered a lot of input on this item and I'd really like to hear where you're at with it before I make any type of motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to present.
Hey, does anybody want to go first? Okay, Councilmember Contras?
Uh, thank you so much, Councilmember Green, for bringing this up. Um, as you know, I, you know, the last time we reviewed this, it was a four-to-one vote and I was the vote against it. Simply because, uh, I have heard, um, probably more than I even, uh, ever wanted to hear, uh, the complaints about the sign. And, and I, um, I'm actually one of those complainers, to be honest with you, because I really do believe that, um, we have a lot of pride in our city. Uh, I, uh, think that, um, this council and previous councils have done a great job of rejuvenating the downtown. And, you know, at one point, um, it probably made more sense to think about rebranding, right, with Paseo Santa Fe. But, uh, now, we're in a position where we do have this rejuvenation, um, that has gone really well, where, uh, we don't necessarily need to rebrand. gone really well, where we don't necessarily need to rebrand, we just have to properly invest in the city of Vista. And a small investment of, you know, around $35,000 where we can proudly display Vista on our arches, I think is a small cost with a huge return on investment, simply because people do not take pictures of the Paseo Santa Fe sign right now. So if we want to have this as a long-term marketing strategy, $35,000, you know, less than $40,000 to have a huge return on investment for, you know, beyond our lifetimes, I think it's a really small investment to make and it's the right thing to do. So I am fully supportive of moving forward and having, I think the Vista clearly won. The Welcome to Vista didn't do as well as Vista. But I think it is important for us to have the Paseo Santa Fe because we've put so much time and effort into creating Paseo Santa Fe. So maybe just a little bit smaller on the bottom, Vista really big. I'm, you know, the, I'm going to be honest with you, I almost feel like it would look better without even the hummingbird because now when I just look at the hummingbird, I just look at what else is not there. So maybe that will change in the future. But it's just, yeah. Preferably, I would say no hummingbird, Vista, Paseo Santa Fe on the bottom, but I'll take Vista with Paseo Santa Fe on the bottom, so.
Anybody else, or do you want me to go ahead and go? Okay, Councilmember Franklin.
I was just going to ask if we have any public comments.
We do have anyone that's requested to speak.
Did you have, did you want to say something or? I have some things to say, but I can wait.
Madam Mayor, I'd love to hear what you have to say.
I'm the old one. I've been living in Vista for 49 years. Just a little, little history here for everybody. But Saultana Fe was planned, actually, I remember talking to Gloria McClellan about this and that would be when I first on the council 22 years ago. She actually, there actually was an adult store down on Saultana Fe and she used to sit outside of it every day with her sign and protest at that time and it was full of crime and other things, prostitution. But through the years, we've met with like the businesses downtown, they wanted, they had community, we had community meetings, people came in throughout Vista, this was years ago, they had community meetings, we talked about the arches, where we wanted them, we talked about the lawn, the street furniture, we talked about, you know, the fixtures that were there, what style that they wanted, all of those kind of things. And the, the community wanted to change the image of the corridor. They, they, they weren't thinking that that was Vista. At that point, you wouldn't want, would you want to put Vista there? You wouldn't want to put, this is Vista, so they wanted to change the corridor and the perception that their business was on that corridor and that's what they were looking at changing. And so actually, that goal continued through several councils and I can tell, I mean, through Gloria, my first council, Dick Cook, Ed Estes, Ted Cole, went through Frank Lopez, who actually owned Casa Linda down there, Bob Campbell, Paul Campo, Mayor Morris Vance, I'm sure I forgot a few of these people, if I start listing them all, but it's been through several councils and always the goal was there to that corridor, they wanted to make that corridor better. That was their goal, all of their goal, all that time, but we never had the money, we could never get the money to do it and that was what the problem was. So, but it was to change the perception. So, but now I worry that you're doing Vista and this, and I'm not going, if all of you want to do that, it's fine, I understand, I'm old, I've been there too many years, it's time maybe for new people, but you know, you referenced the last four years, I'm talking the last 22 years. So it's been a plan for that long, it wasn't something that this, we don't plan things and then they, one year and then the next year we do it. Big projects in the city of Vista take McClellan Center, all those things took a long time to build and the ideas today that everybody has are maybe not the same as what they were years ago. So, but, but we're going to bookend the corridor, Vista at one end, Vista at the other end, but however you want to do it. It kind of leaves out the downtown and the Sinopla Center. If you want to say, is this, is this what you say, this is Welcome to Vista and this corridor is Vista? There's more to Vista than that street. I would say if you're going to say Vista, you want to say it on Vista Village Drive, which is where we talked about it years ago, that was where they said, where you come into Vista, then you say Vista, this is where Vista, you know, Welcome Vista or Vista. That was, that was totally a corridor change. Now, now if you guys want to do that, it's fine. It wasn't for selfies, it wasn't for people to get their picture taken by the arch, it was for the businesses and the change in the corridor, the perception for the businesses. And I drove down there yesterday and a lot of the businesses have changed the facades, they're all upgrading, it looks wonderful and the, you know, the whole, the whole improvements are just, I'm so proud of what's going on there. I was proud of the McClellan Center, of the Sinopla Center where they built that, I'm proud of this, it's a, it's a thing we all can be proud of, you know, in Vista. So I get it and I get that there's a lot of people that weren't happy with that. A lot of those people just moved to Vista or haven't lived here as long and weren't a part of the planning process because it was planned for so long. Things like that corridor don't happen overnight, they happen over a lot of years. So anyway, so, but you know, I just say we all be proud about it and if that's what you all decide to do, I'm not going to stand against it, I will support you and it will be Vista, no matter what it is, I'm proud of Vista and what's going on in Vista and so, that's my two cents. Okay, Councilmember Contreras.
Mayor Ritter, I just want to say that us having this conversation about changing it to Vista is only because it's a testament to the long way that we've come under your leadership and the vision that you have brought forth to the city of Vista and all the other councils before. And so that's the only reason why now, you know, we're like, it's a no-brainer, we should put Vista, because people are so proud of our city. So I just want to say, it's a good thing that we're having this discussion because we have elevated our city to a level that people did not think was possible. And, you know, I'm 32, so, you know, I wasn't a part of any of these discussions, I didn't even realize really what you all did until 2017, right? When I started showing up to council.
I was born back then.
So again, again, I just want to say, this is, we're having this conversation about, you know, changing it to Vista because of the incredible amount of work that you and other councils have put into making Vista just a better place, every day trying to improve the quality of life. And now people, they want to show off their civic pride and they want to be able to take a sign, a picture with the sign and just say, I'm in Vista, you know? And so I know, I 100% can guarantee you that as soon as, if the council, it's the will of the council to change the sign to say Vista, as soon as it's unveiled, our Instagram stream is just going to be Vista, Vista, Vista sign everywhere, it's going to be just in time for our businesses to really, you know, be able to use that as a marketing strategy too, like, hey, look at, it's Vista, we're proud, we have rejuvenated this part of our community and we want to show it off to everybody. So I just want to say, what we're talking about right now, again, it really is a testament to the incredible work that has been done to improve the image of Vista. So I just wanted to leave it there because I am really proud of everything that everybody has done.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate my, the comments from my colleagues. I just have a couple of comments and I appreciate, Mayor, what you said about the history of this and I don't want that to get lost on anybody. We had a community committee put together, we had several community meetings to talk about this and to work on this over a period of time. And it was through those community meetings and the votes of the people involved in all of that, that we came to what was brought before us. And I don't want to discount all the people who worked on that, who were on that committee, all of those citizens who came out in those meetings and voiced their opinions and had the discourse and what they wanted and what they saw as their vision for this. And that's what was brought to us. And when we voted on the allocation of the funding for the first sign to go up, I was on the council for that. The previous vote for the sign, the design of it, et cetera, that was the previous council as the mayor had, had talked about. Having gone through all of that history with the community members, the residents, the businesses, et cetera. And at the time I brought it up, it was in our budget, we were going to allocate the funding for this and there was nobody in the room, there was nobody in the chambers talking about it, it was buried in the budget. And I did make a comment that perhaps we would want to, you know, postpone it and have a discussion on it because it had been a while. But some of the people who were on that committee did contact and said, you know, hey, we put a lot of time and energy in this, the businesses, the residents, and this is what our vision is and we would really appreciate it if you would implement the vision that we worked hard to come up with and we look for this in the future for our city. So we went ahead and said, okay, great, we allocated the funding, the arch went up. And then that's when we heard from a lot of people who didn't, didn't like the arch. And I'm sad that those people who came out and didn't like the arch were not participating in the process prior to in getting us to the arch where, where we were at that point. And so we had all this discussion and as you know, we had to bring the arch down, we put Vista under it. I'm disappointed to see, you know, Anna's hummingbird is the city bird, the California lilac, which is native to this area in Vista, is the city official flower. And I'm disappointed to see that you would take the flower off of it and I'm disappointed to hear continuously what people think of the flower in the silhouette. I wish there was another way that we could present the flower and I'm disappointed that Facebook emojis have taken over the psyche of everybody that that's all they think about because there's more to it than that. And, and I'm disappointed that we acquiesce to the mindset of Facebook emojis instead of looking at the heritage of what is Vista. So that disappoints me, that we would, we would lose that instead of defend it and educate people, that's a hummingbird, that's a lilac. You heard me say that the last time we had the discussion on it as well. And when we talk about Vista, I have said this before, this is nothing new to anybody, but I think if we're going to have a Vista sign, it should be in a gateway location, it should be coming into the city. And some of the pictures that Councilman Green showed had cities, you know, Carlsbad, Encinitas, Alcoa. And, and those signs are as you're entering those cities from one direction or another. The neighborhood cities, Kensington, North Park, whatever the other ones were, those are the signs going into those particular neighborhoods and identifying those neighborhoods. And I think when you put Vista, I would love to see Vista in a gateway entry to our city, not just in a neighborhood area. And as I have said before, if, I would love to see all of our neighborhoods, our, our particular neighborhoods that we identify have their own signs in one form or fashion or another and they should all say that they are a community of Vista, like Shadow Ridge signs do, I think they say Shadow Ridge, a Vista community. And I really like that because you identify your neighborhood, but you also keep it in the context of the city as a whole and that we are one people as Vistins. So I, I'm not in favor of Vista on top because I think it's the wrong location for that. I agree with the mayor, mayor's point on that. So I wouldn't be in favor of, of doing that. But I also am not in favor of changing the sign, you know, expending any amount of money on changing the existing sign that we have already changed once before. Because a lot of time and energy and thought went into doing that and then we redid it at the behest of, of the community and we did what the community asked us at that time. And now, a couple of years later, we're being asked to do it again. What happens in a couple of years when people want us to change it again for another whim? I'm not really willing to keep doing this. I also have a concern about the finances at this point in time. Earlier tonight, we had the conversation about deferring business license fees because of the COVID, because so many businesses are, are closed and have been closed. A lot of those businesses have laid off their employees. We here at City Hall had to lay off employees. So I really question the timing of this and spending, even though it's been mentioned $35,000 out of X amount of money is doable. Is it fiscally responsible to the community in a time like this to spend money to change out a sign that we've already changed out? So for, for that and a few other reasons, I'm going to be a no on changing the sign on this one, but I appreciate the conversation and I appreciate Councilman Green bringing this back and, and allowing the conversation, but it's, it's going to be a, a no from me on this one for different reasons.
Let's remember Contreras.
I really don't buy the argument that this is fiscally irresponsible at $35,000. So, and if anything, it would be fiscally irresponsible to put signs all over the place in Vista, that's 18 square miles. You know, when we're looking at other cities that have, you know, their name, they don't put that like at the freeway entrance, you know, these cities are putting it where it's walkable because it is a big financial expenditure, right? So you want to get it right, this is a marketing strategy. And again, $35,000 for an overwhelming amount of Vistins that have commented that they can't believe it ever said Paseo Santa Fe to begin with, which I've heard the history, I understand it. However, we are in a different place right now. We're in a place again where we have a lot of Vista pride and I think it's time to show it off. I would never want to just create signs just to show Vista. But we have two signs, I was not in favor of putting a second sign because I thought that $350,000 to allocate for a second sign, that was fiscally irresponsible. But $35,000 to fix both signs is not that expensive. I mean, we're talking about, I don't even know what percentage that is. We still have quite a significant reserve because council was so prudent that we had an emergency deficit reserve to use before we hit our reserves. So we're, and we're getting all this money in candidates with sales tax. So really to discuss, to make a point that this is a fiscally irresponsible thing to do, I just don't buy that argument. But, I mean, how can we be so deaf to what people in Vista want? It's just not, it's not a good luck for our city to continuously, you know, kind of just plug our ears when we have so many people telling us for so many years that they really would like to show off their Vista pride in a different way. And if we were to keep, keep Paseo Santa Fe, I mean, we're creating a make-believe place. I'm, I'm just going to be honest with you, it's a make-believe place. And if we were going to continue in that route, then we need to tie it into the city better. You know, we can't just, you can't just be driving, then you hit Paseo Santa Fe, like you don't even know where you're at. I don't think it's geo-tagged anywhere. None of our, you know, the businesses owners and, and people that I talk to, they're not like, you know, they don't tell their customers, hey, head on over to, you know, we're between the two Paseo Santa Fe arches. It's like, people, this is our downtown, if anything, perhaps Welcome to Downtown Vista, which is a lot more letters, which would probably be more than $35,000, like I could see an argument where that makes sense. But to just ignore all the comments from so many Vistins, I just don't think that's right. And again, this is a testament to all the hard work that all the councils before this, including this council and our fearless leader here, Mayor Ritter. You know, it's a testament to the incredible rejuvenation that we've had in our community. So I just, it's such a small sum of money to really fix something that, and we, we've talked about it as fixing because that's, that's the real term, like people want this to be fixed, to be able to show off their Vista pride. So I could go on forever, but again, I'm happy to be having this conversation and you know what, I'm just going to offer a motion at this point to move forward with changing both signs on the gateway arches to Vista, with having the Paseo Santa Fe on the bottom, the design that Councilmember Green put forward, so I'm just going to put that out there.
And Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor, we do have a couple of public comments now, if you wanted to take that before continuing the conversation.
Okay, I'll take those and then, and then I have Councilmember Green and Deputy Mayor raise their hands, so. You guys ask the comments, okay?
Okay, first speaker will be Amanda Mae Fitzgerald. Go ahead, Amanda.
Hello, thank you for listening. I really appreciate you guys giving me this time. I have to say that I agree with Councilmember Green and Councilmember Contreras. When the sign first went up, I heard a lot of comment from City of Vista members that didn't quite understand what it was for or why it was called Paseo Santa Fe. I get that that is Santa Fe, but I think that there are a lot of people that that causes confusion for. I also get Mayor Ritter putting in all of the years of effort towards making that corridor look better, and it looks amazing, there's no doubt about that. I just think that it not being called Vista or that Vista not being there is confusing. And if you're talking about branding, as a business owner, you want everything in your brand to be the same and to be recognizable. And I think that putting Vista in that corridor makes sense. If we wanted it in a different corridor, it would have made more sense to put it in a different corridor, but it is the standout corridor for our city. It has become that. And as a Public Arts Commissioner, on the hummingbird note, I know that we're going to be putting another hummingbird sculpture in that corridor. And I think that the hummingbird makes sense, and I love seeing the hummingbird as our Vista symbol. So I really hope that you guys will consider changing it to say Vista with Paseo Santa Fe underneath in smaller letters. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cliff Kaiser. Go ahead, Cliff.
Greetings, Council. Just a couple of comments. When the sign went up way back when, 2016 maybe, or something like that, the renderings that were provided to the public up until very near the council meeting that it was approved were not what was up there. So the statement that the public had plenty of opportunity to be, to get involved in the planning and the discussion is not entirely correct, because what went before the council was different than what they had seen prior to that. The other comment I have is with regards to the bird and the lilac. Generally, if a sign cannot be read or interpreted without an explanation, then it's not a good sign. So that's reason enough to reconsider the bird and the lilac. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes public comments. We'll go ahead and close opportunity for public comment at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman Franklin, I had Joe Green, our Councilmember Green, and Deputy Mayor first, and then I'll call on you.
We actually hadn't heard from Councilmember Franklin yet, so I'm fine to let him take my spot, that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin, and then Deputy Mayor.
You know, I have sympathies to both sides of this argument. I do understand that, you know, nearly 20 years of planning went into creating Paseo Santa Fe. I have to agree with Councilwoman Contreras. I never understood the double arches. That never really made sense to me. I'd never seen that done elsewhere. And I understand the intent to frame the corridor, but two of the exact same arch never really appealed to me. I'm going to throw you a curveball, as I like to do sometimes. We've already paid for an arch. What if we were to put it over Main Street at Michigan, from Curbside to our little, we have a little tiny, you know, we have a fountain on the corner there at Michigan and Main. What if we were to put a Vista sign there? What if we were to move the sign we've already paid for? We're not buying a new sign. We've already paid for one, hadn't been built yet. I can see our city manager is really loving this idea. I'm sure there's 10 reasons why this does not work, but I'm sure we could find our way around all of them. You know, the archway signs, I agree, they're usually in a walkable neighborhood, and they're usually in a place where you want to get out of your car and be on foot, you know? And I, you know, the selfie didn't exist 20 years ago. It does now. It is reality now. And, you know, I think it was Patrick and John Connolly were in the city council conference room, and I got to admit, the very first thing, when he laid the drawing down of the Paseo archway, the very first thing out of my mouth was, it doesn't say Vista. I was a little taken aback, and it was, that was my first, you know, glimpse of the sign well before it was constructed, was to see the sketch of it. And I was, I was kind of taken aback, and I had fully expected this beautiful arch to say Vista. But at the same time, I do want to honor the decisions that were made before, and the council and the citizens who planned, and all the work we did to really change the nature and really make people proud to want to go to the Santa Fe corridor. So I'm going to throw this wild harebrained idea out. I don't, when are we supposed to begin construction on the second arch? Or had they already begun the metalwork?
So Councilman Franklin, the arch itself has already been built.
The second one?
Yeah, and some of the lettering's already been completed, but obviously it hasn't been fabricated together. Well, your comment on having an arch on Main Street, the problem with that is the arch has already been built, and it is a lot larger than the footprint from Curbside to the fountain, we'll say. But I did want to comment on South Santa Fe, though. The goal was to make it a walkable community. And, you know, the council can decide what you want to do with the sign, but in terms of pedestrian-oriented, it went from four lanes to two lanes. So it had a road diet, the sidewalks are widened, so when it's done, the sidewalks are widened all the way down. And that was the goal, is that it would be more of a pedestrian destination, to be able to shop and eat and dine and live, frankly. But in answering your question, the arch is done, the span of the arch is a lot larger than what would go from Main Street to the fountain area.
Yeah, I thought that might be the case. Well, given the fact that it's already constructed, that kind of kills that idea. But, you know, the idea I was having before that, which is probably equally bad, was what if one of the signs said Vista and one of them said Paseo Santa Fe? Yeah, I didn't think anybody would like that idea, I just thought I'd throw it out It would be, everybody gets a little something what they want.
Okay, so let's see, who was first? Was it Deputy Mayor first and then Councilmember Green? I can't remember.
I think it was Councilmember Green.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
Okay, no problem. I just wanted to comment on a few things. Number one, I never did get to just reiterate my thanks to you, Madam Mayor. This truly is your town, and I know it, I feel it. Everything that you have said and that you have done for this town over these years is huge. And 22 years ago, in 1998, our crime rate was 41%, and you were absolutely correct. I would have not wanted to put a Vista sign anywhere near Paseo Santa Fe. You know, the work that you've done down there, rejuvenating that area and making it an area that my family and I can walk down at night and want to walk down at night. I mean, the fact we are having this conversation, as Karina said, is a huge testament to the work that you've done. So I want to make sure the work of the past is not being discounted. We're not getting rid of Paseo Santa Fe. I would even say change the name of the street in that area to Paseo Santa Fe instead of just Santa Fe, branded even more street-name-wise. But as far as community pride in Vista goes, I beg to differ. This is a gateway to our city. If you're going to City Hall, you're going to pass this sign. If you're going to Belching Beaver or Kirkorian, you're pretty much going to see the sign. Vista Village Drive and Civic Center Drive are two huge arterial streets in our community. People from Temecula use our city as a cut-through. We talk about why our traffic's so bad. It's because people are always driving through those streets. So I believe we have tons of traffic on the street, and it is a perfect highlight to this corridor. And making it say Vista, you're absolutely correct. I love Vista, you guys know more than anything. I got Vista hats, skateboards, shirts, you name it. Every time I go on vacation, I take a picture with Vista. You know how many selfies or pictures I've taken with the Paseo sign? None! And I know it's not about selfies, but I'll tell you what, Vistins are going to come down to Vista to take a picture with that sign, then they're going to spend money at Sonic, then they're going to walk to Belching Beaver, they're going to go to Bear Roots Groove, they're going to go to Milk Organics, they're going to go to all of our amazing restaurants, Miko's Sushi, Town Hall, I mean, you name it. We've provided this atmosphere for people that they want to come to. And I love, nobody else has bookend marquees, but guess what? Vista can have it, because this is our corridor and we're Vista, and we're different. So I really feel like this is a gateway, this is something that's awesome. When's the last time you could spend $35,000 in marketing and get a 10, 20, 30-year return on investment? We spent a ton of money on Vista's open and helping our businesses. This sign is going to attract all 100,000 Vistins to that area, because they're all going to want to stand in front of a sign in a city that they live and show their families, look, I live in Vista, oh, and this is our cool corridor, you know? So for me, $35,000 is .0004% of our budget, .0004. I am not a fiscally irresponsible person. I've owned my own business for 22 years, I'm the sole income of my wife and four kids. And when I look at all the money we spend as a city, on the things we spend it on, this line item is something I am more happy than anything to spend money on. So with a very huge enthusiastic, I'll be seconding Karina Contreras's motion to change the sign to read Vista up top and Paseo Santa Fe below. Thank you for your time.
Deputy Mayor, your turn.
I have no other comments, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Anybody else see no other comments? We have a motion and a second. I will guess I have.
And what you're saying is, Councilmember Green, or Councilwoman Contreras, the picture references Vista, Paseo Santa Fe underneath with the hummingbird still in the sign, correct? Thank you, Mayor.
So then I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
No.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye, I'm so happy I could cry right now, thank you.
My motion passes with voting no. Thank you.
Save it for your selfie. Okay, next, let's see, where are we? Oh, D2, okay, here we go. The next discussion item is a proposed zone change at the southwest corner of Eucalyptus Avenue and Civic Center Drive. Public hearing is now open. Community Development Director John Connolly will be providing the staff report, and if any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentations by staff and the applicant. So that I turn it over to our Community Development Director, Conley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a preliminary review of a request for a zone change, a catty corner from the Civic Center at the corner of Eucalyptus and Civic Center Drive. Kathy, if you could forward to the next slide. An applicant has submitted a preliminary request to change his zoning designation on two parcels that are part of a larger development site of three parcels located at the southwest corner of Civic Center and Eucalyptus Avenue. The APNs are shown on the slide there. The zone change would modify the zoning designation on two of the three parcels from mixed-use 30 to specific plan implementation in the downtown specific plan within the Civic Center District. This zone change would be required to develop the site with a commercial and residential mixed-use project at the density that's proposed by the applicant. Next slide, please. The project location is shown here. It's three parcels, it's the corner parcel, the southwest corner of Civic Center and Eucalyptus, as well as the two residential parcels behind at 209 and 211. And Kathy, if you click there, it'll show a red area over the two residential parcels that would require the rezone. So the corner parcel is currently in the downtown specific plan and enjoys a higher density and fewer development standard restrictions than the two residential parcels, which are in the mixed-use zone. So the applicant is requesting to change the zoning designation on the two parcels in red to match the zoning that's at the corner so that they could develop it as one comprehensive project. Next slide, please. Existing and proposed zoning is shown here. You can see the corner parcel is designated downtown Vista specific plan on the left with the two residential lots designated as mixed-use 30. The proposal would be to rezone all three parcels or the two, so that all three parcels would be within the downtown Vista specific plan. Next slide. The applicant has submitted a conceptual development plan, which was provided in your packet. This is a site plan for the ground floor. He's requesting to develop a mixed-use commercial and residential project where you would have two commercial suites on the ground floor, each totaling about 1,500 square feet, parking behind the commercial suites with three stories of residential above the parking garage. The total unit count would be 24 units in the proposal that was submitted, with access on both Eucalyptus and Civic Center Drive. Next slide, please. This is an architectural rendering that was submitted by the applicant to give the council some idea of the scale and architectural theme of the project. If the council supports the rezone request, then the applicant would be required to submit a formal application that would go through design review with staff before it's brought back to the Planning Commission and the council for a final decision. So this is just to give you some idea of the vision for the site if the zone change is supported. Next slide. The zoning standards are shown here. Sorry, the slide got a little lower than what's on it, but essentially showing the difference between the density, building height, setbacks, and parking. The density in the MU zone is lower than what's in the Civic Center zone, so this is what's precipitating the request for the zone change, 30 versus 40 DU per acre. The building height in the mixed-use zone is lower at three stories or 45 feet. The downtown specific plan allows up to 60 feet in height. The setbacks in the mixed-use zone are fairly significant in the Civic Center District, requiring 15 feet in the front, 15 feet above the residential zones, which are behind, and 25 feet above the second story of the structure. In the Civic Center zone, in the downtown specific plan, there's a five-foot front setback and a 15-foot rear setback with zero sides, so larger building envelope is provided. And finally, with respect to parking, the parking standards in the mixed-use zone are what our normal multifamily standards are, which is 2.3 for a one-bedroom or 2.5 for a two-bedroom. In the Civic Center, they're lower standards, recognizing you're closer to transit opportunities, a one-bedroom at 1.25 parking spaces per unit, and a two-bedroom at 2.25 spaces per unit. That includes your guest spaces. Next slide. So the staff requests, the zone changes and general plan amendments are always brought before the council at the initial stage to gauge the council's interest in the application. A formal application would be required, dependent on the council's direction. The formal application would be reviewed by the Planning Commission and the council at the time that it's submitted. So we're asking the council to weigh in on this request this evening and provide staff with any input, as well as the applicant, on the preliminary request for zone change. So that completes my staff presentation, Mayor, and I know the applicant is also prepared to provide a brief presentation to the council. And the applicant is Kevin Leon, who's the project manager, as well as Mark Lyon, who's the architect, and Phil Salvaggio, who's the owner. And I believe Mr. Leon is planning to make the presentation.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, good evening. My name is Mark Lyon, I'm the architect. I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Salvaggio, the owners of the property located at the southwest corner of Eucalyptus and Civic Center Drive. Thank you, Mr. Connolly, for the presentation, and I apologize to you if I repeat some of the information that Mr. Connolly's given you. We're here simply to ask for your assistance in the first step of the development of this property. We'll see that we have a couple of difficulties on the development for this particular lot. The second slide, please. Thank you. As you can see, we have three parcels purchased individually, the two at the bottom were purchased together, but they are of a different zone. If you could go to slide three, please. If you could go to slide three, please. Thank you. Again, this is a duplication, so I apologize. But the Lot 1, which is the top SP1, is in the downtown Vista specific plan in the Civic Center Zone. And the two lots below are located in the MU 30 mixed-use zone. We've been told by Planning Department we have to consolidate these lots. And it's required that we consolidate them into the most restrictive zone, which would be the MU. We're simply asking that the City Council allow us to consolidate them into the least restrictive zone. And I'll show you why that is. Could you go to slide number four, please? Thank you. By the way, the downtown Vista specific plan land use map, if you can see the red circle, those three lots are located in that zone, in the DVSP zone. So the documentation and the handouts that were approved by City Council back in 2018, I believe, show those three lots to be in one zone and in the least restrictive zone. Mr. Salvaggio purchased those lots with the intention of developing in a mixed-use zone based on some of these maps that we've seen that they're open to the public. Could you go to slide five, please? Thank you. The consolidated lot area of three parcels is 40,155 square feet, almost an acre. Based on that lot size, Mr. Salvaggio is allowed to build either 36 or 27 apartment units, depending on which zone you refer to. We wish to build 24 units. On its face, this sounds great. However, what determines the developability of this property is the parking required. Required parking for 24 units on the DVSP zone is 52. Required parking for 24 units under the MU 30 zone is 73. You can see there's a substantial difference in the required parking for 24 units. Based on the size and configuration, we can only fit 52 parking spaces on this lot. Keep in mind, we also are providing parking for two commercial retail spaces up the street. Based on the MU 30 zone, the most restrictive zone, Mr. Salvaggio can only build 15 units, unless we build an underground parking lot, which is both cost prohibitive and probably not the best solution for this corner lot. Based on the DVSP zone, which is the most lenient, 52 parking spaces will allow Mr. Salvaggio to build his 24 units, much closer to the intended density of lots. Let me repeat that. Under the restrictive zone, this project is really not feasible. Under the least restrictive zone, it is. So difficulty number two. If you could go to the next slide, please. Right. So these are three pictures of the property at the corner. And as you can see, it's a very special property. We're right across the street from the City Hall and it's at a prime intersection in the city of Vista. You can also see that we've got some challenges with the steepness of this site. This is also creating problems with the parking. Could you go to slide number seven, please? Thank you. This is a section through the lot. And as you can see, the dotted line is the natural topography. The dark lines are the structural floors and walls of the proposed building. And you can see that the second level has to be raised up because we have to get the driveways to fit on this lot and stay within the standards for slopes of driveways and ability to get handicap accessibility and things like that incorporated. So Zone MU 30, which is the most restrictive, allows a maximum height limit of 45 feet. The DVSP zone, the least restrictive, requires a maximum height limit of 60 feet. Our proposed project is 49 feet. And again, most of the complexity of that height limit is due to that first level of parking and the driveway slopes. We just need a few more feet above 45 feet to get this to fit. Could you go to slide eight, please? Thank you. We're very excited about the proposed design and would love the opportunity to create a vibrant and active community plaza and mixed-use center to support the City Hall facility across the street. We respectfully request the City Council make a very simple decision. Please allow Mr. Salvaggio to develop this project under the DVSP zoning designation, which is the designation which makes the project feasible. Could you go to slide number nine, please? This is again from the handout and pamphlets that we received prior to building the project or proposing to build a project. And as you can see, those three lots are all included in the same DVSP zone. We believe that was the intention of the council when they approved the downtown specific plan use plan in 2018. And there was even an ordinance, it's 2018-14. And you can see in the exhibit, it appears it was the city's original intention to include those three parcels in the lesser restrictive zone of the DVSP. Thank you very much for allowing to make this presentation.
Okay. So with that, Councilmember Franklin.
So I don't know if staff needs time to research the question, but if we approve that map and that specific zone with those parcels highlighted, is it the fact that the council has already changed the zone on that, on those two parcels? And that we just simply haven't caught up and recorded them?
No, I was not actually aware that the land use map that's in the downtown Vista specific plan included those two lots until the presentation. And frankly, our official zoning map that was approved by the council shows the correct zoning and we have clarified for the applicant what the correct zoning is.
Very good.
Councilmember Green.
All right. So I've lived in this district, worked in this district for over 25 years. I know that slope very well because I used to own a Huffy bike that I used to be able to pedal up that hill to those jumps on top of that hill, okay? So I'm very familiar with your lot. I'm actually familiar with both of the properties. The other thing that I'm familiar with is our zoning and our general plan, unfortunately. And at right, at this point right now, we have a lot of new projects being built. I'm not sure how familiar you are with our town, but we got the Monarch Development going in where we used to have an old trailer park. We got a 55-plus development going in on the other side of Civic Center Drive. And we really haven't seen the focused impacts from those developments yet because they're not built yet. People don't all live in them yet. Also, we approved Delphi Corner, which is another big project. So we have a lot of stuff going on. I'm not sure why I didn't speak with you guys before your presentation. Typically, before builders come and present to the council, they want to speak to us first to kind of hear what our opinion is on it. I personally have no plans of changing the zoning in my general plan right now. I feel like just recently, this council changed the zoning on Civic Center Drive to this zoning to allow densification on this particular street. So I have the question to Mr. Conley. I know, I know why you want it, Mr. Lyon. I see that you, you get 21 less parking spots if I change the zoning. And that's obviously better for a developer. However, until I see what's going on with these other developments that are meeting our criteria and haven't asked us to do a lot of, you know, changing of our plan, what that does, I'm not inclined at all to approve this project or advise you to spend any more money at this point in time. But I would like to ask Mr. Conley, when did us as a council review the zoning here on Civic Center Drive? Because I know we put a lot of thought into this zoning and I believe it was changed within the last four years, if I'm not mistaken.
The zoning on Civic Center Drive was established around 2015 when we adopted the last update to the downtown specific plan. And we had a discussion on setbacks and density, I believe, a year later in 2016. That's my record.
And that had to do with kind of the corridor near Crescent and Civic Center Drive and things like that. I know we have a, we also have a couple other developments on Civic Center Drive, the old music shop and another, you know, house over there that I think they're building another little development over there. So the zoning that's in there currently is conducive for investors to build. And that is kind of the furthest point of our downtown specific plan. And I'll tell you what, sir, I don't know if you've been here when school gets out at that corner or not, but the amount of traffic improvements that would have to be done on that corner just to release the funnel of cars that come through there every single day would be extremely extensive. I mean, if you, you know, take it the high traffic hours, you're going to see when school's in session and City Hall's going on. I mean, there's times I wait in the City Hall parking lot to leave between the hours of 2:30 and 3:15 for like 40 minutes. And that, it's a lot of traffic there. So me personally, right now, until I see what the focused impacts are of all of these other developments, I have no intention of changing the zoning. And I would appreciate if my council would follow my lead on that for this particular lot. Thank you for your time.
Well, I like the architectural design and I would love to see something go on that corner, but I'm not willing to, with apartments that are built and all the people that are parking on the street because there's not enough parking in our, in a lot of our developments, I wouldn't, I would have to use a mixed-use zoning because I, the higher parking restrictions. But there's lots behind those three lots, down on Eucalyptus. Maybe, I don't know if you can buy a couple of those lots and use some parking down there, but I wouldn't be willing to change those lots, those mixed uses because I want the higher parking requirements on those. So, but I like, I mean, I like your design and I like the idea of having that corner cleaned up. And I do realize there's challenges with that, the hills and everything there. So anyway, that's, those are my comments. Anybody else? I'm not seeing anybody waving at me. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Lyon. I appreciate it very much. I have to agree with my colleagues, however. I'm not in favor of rezoning this area. We've recently gone through very extensively to put the zoning where we think it's appropriate. And I'm not in favor of rezoning it. And I'm certainly, anybody who's been following along with me the last few years knows that I'm not in favor of reducing parking requirements because that ends up pushing a problem out into the surrounding communities, the surrounding neighborhoods, and that's, that doesn't usually end well. So I appreciate this. I agree with the mayor. I like the look of it. I'm just not going to be in favor of rezoning and reducing parking. But good luck and maybe we can see you come back with something different.
Any else?
Mayor, it looks like Mr. Salvaggio would like to make a comment.
Oh, okay.
Deputy Owner, would you like to hear from him now?
Okay, fine.
Yes, this is Mr. Salvaggio. Thank you for your time. I'll just be real quick. The only reason I bought the other two lots is because it was in that zone. So I was going to the map. I wouldn't have done it. I wouldn't have spent that money if I knew this was going to happen. And unfortunately, you know, this is going to put a big wrench into the project. And, and now it puts a bad position on myself. So I only went off to original map and that's what it says on there. And I don't want to cause any trouble, but that's what it does say.
Okay, do I, oh, Councilmember Contreras, I think he waved at me before he spoke.
Yeah, you know what? I don't, I actually don't have that much add because I agree with all the comments that have been made already. I think the plan looks beautiful. It just doesn't seem entirely feasible with the amount of congestion that this area already experiences. And I do appreciate Councilmember Green, the point that you made that, hey, you know what? We have a lot of moving parts right now and it would be good to follow, you know, what we have in our plan right now. Eventually, you know, whatever council will look at that. And if there needs to be updates, that would be the proper time to do so. As of now, yeah, I would not be supportive either of doing a zone change to capture it all as the specific plan, the downtown specific plan. So those are my comments.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Green.
I just had a question. Mr. Salvaggio stated that he only purchased this property because he has a map or was provided with a map that stated this was in his downtown specific plan. For that, perhaps this is a question for you, Mr. Piper. Is there any such map on file that as a city, we have provided a home buyer doing their due diligence that was incorrect information? And if we did provide that map to a homeowner, what type of liability are we exposed to if we don't honor the map that was provided? I just want to know where, where'd the map come from? Did we give it to him and all that good stuff? So let me know whoever could answer that.
Map came from or how it was distributed? Mr. Conley might have better information on that.
So the map, it appears, is the land use map that's included in the downtown specific plan that was adopted by the council the last time the plan was updated. But yeah, unfortunately, it shows those two properties in the plan when they're not in the plan. So wasn't caught by staff when the map was approved. The map needs to be revised and those lots need to be taken off. But does the official zoning map, as I indicated, that the city uses and recognizes and is in our GIS system and also available on the city's website, shows the correct zoning? So yes, there's a correction that needs to be made. But had the applicant come and talked to us at any point, we would have clarified what the zoning was. So.
Okay.
Correct what's happened, but the map is, that's in the, is not correct.
So from a liability standpoint, it sounds like we're not exposed to any liability. The buyer had, they done their due diligence within the period and said, hey, I'm going to be building a development here. I better check with the city before I close escrow. Everybody in our planning department would have been able to easily look at the GIS map and easily tell him, yes, those two properties are mixed-use. They are separate. So from a liability standpoint, we're fine, is what's my question.
We have not, even, they have not paid any, or submitted any application nor have we given any approval based on incorrect zoning information.
Okay, so yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Franklin.
Doesn't our GIS information integrate with the commercial MLS system?
No, not to my knowledge. In other words, the MLS is separate and apart from our GIS. It may be relied upon for MLS, but it's not linked in any way.
I'm just thinking, the co-star, the commercial MLS probably buys a disc from us once a year or something.
So the GIS information that's provided, if that comes from our database, is correct?
Yeah. I'm not a realtor. I don't, I don't know a lot about that. But I know that the land use designation is generally, correct me if I'm wrong, our real estate professionals, but generally the commercial MLS would provide that information, wouldn't it?
Yes. The other thing to note is that the applicant has a slide, a presentation that shows the correct zoning. So they're aware of what the correct zoning is. I understand if the owner purchased the land looking at the map, but I can't change that now. I can only affect what happens moving forward with the property. So A, the staff will change the map immediately that's in the specific plan so that we avoid this issue in the future. I wasn't aware there was a problem there, so my apology. But B, we haven't taken anything from the applicant other than some fees to review this plan. And they have been informed of what the correct zoning is. That's why they're before you tonight.
Okay, so I don't see any other, oh, so do we need, do we need a motion on this, City Manager? Do we need, or is it just a discussion?
This is an advisory item, Mayor, so I don't think there's any vote required. The council's given the applicant their feedback.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, so then with that, we will, that's our answer and we will move on to the next discussion item. So our next one, our last one, is a proclamation of Constitution Week in the city of Vista. And Deputy Mayor Rigby, I'm asked for this one to be put on the agenda. So I'm going to ask her to introduce the item. And if any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. So I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proclamation that we do every year. A while back, Congress passed a resolution acknowledging September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week annually. And the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution requests this proclamation to recognize Constitution Week here in the city of Vista. And every year, this year, not because of COVID, but every year, we do a display at the library with different books and movies and different things. and different things, uh, showing the history of the United States and the Constitution, the writing of the Constitution and things like that. So um, because we are doing our proclamations differently now with presenting them at a council meeting for signature, I am here before you, um, asking that uh, the proclamation I'm about to read be approved and um, submitted. So the proclamation reads, whereas 233 years ago, our founding fathers gathered in Philadelphia and set our country on a bold course toward forming a more perfect union by drafting the United States Constitution, framing our nation's government. And whereas on September 17th and during the week of September 17th through the 23rd, we celebrate the signing of the Constitution and the American citizens who have devoted their lives to implementing the framers' vision for a nation built on the principles of self-government. Whereas the founders understood that a self-governing republic requires a free and empowered citizenry. We are therefore grateful that our Constitution is designed first and foremost to secure liberty. Through a system of limited government and checks and balances, the Constitution limits the ability of the state to become an obstacle of human flourishing, while simultaneously enabling the state to serve the public good and to protect rights. Whereas the framers of our Constitution were committed not to a king or a particular government, but more to a belief in the promise of America as a free and prosperous society. To fulfill that promise, they designed a government with a constitution that would withstand the inevitable demagoguery, passions and exigencies that would seek to unmask us as a people. And though the durability of our Constitution has been tested through crises and wars, it has endured. Whereas it is a privilege and the duty of the American people to commemorate the ratification of the Constitution, the guardian of our liberties, which embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to the rule of law. Whereas the mayor and members of the Vista City Council recognize the magnitude of the Constitution and the unparalleled success of the system of government it helped create. And we recommit ourselves to the enduring principles of the Constitution and thereby secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the members of the Vista City Council do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2020, in the city of Vista as Constitution Week. And we ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. So with that, Madam Mayor, I would move that we approve this proclamation, claiming September 17th to the 23rd to be Constitution Week in the city of Vista. And just on a side note, anybody who knows me knows I have constitutions all over the place. I have them in my purse. I give them out freely. I have stacks of them in my office. I give them out to anybody who comes to City Hall and visits or asks for one. So if you would like your own pocket Constitution, just give me a call or come by City Hall. I have one for you. So thank you, Madam Mayor. And I look forward to my colleagues' comments.
I'm mute. Councilmember Franklin, sorry.
I am so excited to second your motion, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I never am far from my Constitution. Uh, I I love both of these uh, different copies. They have many different copies of the Constitution. I'm a big fan. Uh, we are the oldest Republican democracy in the history of the world. And that is because of our founding fathers and the ingenious document that they gave us, the Charter for our government, which established a system of balances, uh, checks and balances uh, with the the three different branches. Um, what a proud legacy uh, that they left us, that we would be able to govern ourselves peacefully, that we would be able to transition power peacefully from uh, from different parties and and schools of thought which disagree vehemently about how government should be run, uh, to the core and the fiber they're being, disagree about the size of government and and how government should function, that we transition power, uh, and that we can make this in a civilized manner, uh, and that we have been able to do that longer than any other Republican democracy in history is just incredible. Uh, and so I am so proud uh, to second your motion. Thank you so much for offering this uh, proclamation and resolution.
So um, we have to do a vote on this one? We do, don't we? No.
Yes.
Yes, yes, you do.
And do we have any speakers, um, with our city clerk? Do we have any speakers on this issue?
There are no speakers, so we'll close opportunity for public comment at this time.
I think Councilmember Green wants to speak.
So is Councilwoman Contreras. She seems to be making me, making motion. So I'll go with Councilwoman Contreras first and then Councilmember Green.
Sorry. No, no worries. Actually, I was like, you know, like, council member, he's below me. So I was trying, I don't know what the order is like. But I just want to say, um, uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor Rigby, for bringing this forward. Um, it, you know, I mean, we have gone through a lot um, as a nation and we continue to face very difficult challenges. Uh, but what, you know, unites us is our belief in our Constitution and our founding um, documents and the founding framework of this beautiful nation. So um, I look forward to the many more years that we get to celebrate um, being a a great country um, and becoming a more perfect union. Uh, so thank you again for bringing this uh, forward to the council. I'm very supportive of it.
Councilmember Green.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Contreras, for pointing at me. I appreciate it. I just again wanted to say thank you, Deputy Mayor Rigby, for just bringing this before us. Uh, our oath of office says that we will defend our Constitution and fight for our Constitution against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. And uh, the Constitution of the United States, as uh, Councilmember Franklin said, is the document that we live by, that uh, we we govern by. And regardless of our parties, uh, they're our core beliefs here in the United States of America. And the city of Vista uh, proclaiming Constitution Week is just another testament to our patriotism here in the city of Vista. And our patriotism is Americans, man. No country on this planet I would ever live in. And I'll tell you what, no city in the world I would ever live in than Vista, California. And I've been to a lot of them. This is where you want to be. And with a council like I have and a thoughtfulness of my deputy mayor, mayor and council members, man, best meeting of 2020. Can I just say this? Anyway, mad love, Deputy Mayor. Thank you so much. Roll call vote, what?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And Kathy Valdez, our city clerk, would you roll call vote for us?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Ritter.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Franklin.
Definitely.
Councilmember Green.
1,000% yes.
Councilmember Contreras.
Aye, yes.
The item passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And next year, when the library is open again, uh, come by and look at the display that we do and the interaction that we have with our library patrons on the history of the Constitution. So I invite you all.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we have an opportunity for the public to comment on agency-related matters that are not on the agenda. So if any members of the public wish to address the city council, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now. So City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish for communication?
Yes, we have one. Cliff Kaiser, I'm going ahead and let him in. Go ahead, Cliff.
Great, council again. Um, I love this format. Um, you should have done it before we had the virus. Uh, it allows, or at least the opportunity for more participation. I do have a couple of of thoughts about it, though. Um, I've been to a couple of the commission meetings and in this meeting, the link that shows up in the agendas on the county and the city's website just plain doesn't work. Um, I got obviously into this meeting uh, directly from Zoom, entering the codes and stuff like that, but the link doesn't work. Two reasons. One is it doesn't get translated correctly when it goes to PDF and there's a bunch of spaces in it. But then even if you fix that, it still doesn't work. Um, I think that if you could allow chat or consider allowing chat messages to come in instead of just raising the hand, that may allow a little bit more input or a little bit more screening if you if you need that. But it it seems like it could streamline some comments a little bit. And I would also ask, and and I'm sure that you guys are getting a lot of learning and process from this 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 effort and doing this, but consider having the public allow in uh, on video as well. So we can see, you can see, and others can see the dramatic hand motions and facial expressions that I have, similar to Mr. Green and Mrs. Contreras. All right? Have a great day.
Thank you.
That's our only speaker?
Yes, so we'll uh, close opportunity for public comment.
Okay. Okay, with that, that takes us to remarks. And I have a few here and then I'll pass it down to everyone else. Um, a couple of things. The Vista Library is offering walk-up, doorside service. No appointment is needed. You can request, our customers can request library material, materials by phone or online and they will be notified when their items are ready. So visit sdcl.org for details on that. If you haven't completed the 2020 census, there's still time to respond online at 2020census.gov. Census takers are now busy in homes that have not yet responded. All census takers will have valid ID badges with their photo. Call the bilingual hotline at 760-659-0190 if you have questions. And one other thing, registration for the city's preschool program has started. The classes offer ages 12 months to five years and have safety precautions in place for students and staff. So visit um, vista recreation.com for more information on that. And just one other thing, I just wanted to know that um, the the four mayors and myself, all five of us, wrote a letter to the governor asking them to um, let any business that can follow protocols, healthy protocols, to open up, not just by specific businesses, by naming the specific businesses, but anybody that can follow safely the protocols that are put forth, whatever the business might be, whether it be a hairdresser, a barber, whatever it is, if they can follow the protocols, and many of them can, that they should be able to open up. All businesses. So anyway, we wrote a letter. I don't know where it'll go, but we wrote that to Governor Newsom and we'll see if we get a response for that. Oh, also, um, that we had our two supervisors sign that also, Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Gaspar. So that, those are my announcements. So I will go through and ask everybody what their announcements are. So we will start with, let's see, I'm gonna go the lineup on the screen here. I'll start with Councilmember Green.
I didn't know the lineup, so thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just want to thank my amazing council for a great discussion. Um, and just the research that you do, the information that you guys bring, it's always enlightening to uh, sit next to you guys and work with you. So I really appreciate that. I just want to give one more shout out to our city employees. We didn't all get to congratulate them individually after their proclamations. The fact that they get their own days in Vista, goodness gracious. Someday, I aspire to have Joe Green Day. I don't know how I'm gonna do it, but I'm gonna keep going real hard. One day, come on. Even my grandma has a day in Vista. Anyway, sorry. Aldo Hernandez, Chris Arce and Laura Mead. Aldo Hernandez, not only is he awesome in an employee standpoint, but he is the dodgeball champion in the city right now. That's right. Took me out in dodgeball, not a fan. Laura Mead has the best candy in City Hall. So if you go to HR, she's hiding chocolate there, you can get it. And Chris Arce is just a hardworking guy, great to talk to, represents our city amazingly. So from Councilmember Green, I know my whole council, thank you, city employees, for shining so bright around town. We appreciate you. You're more than employees to us, you're family. So thanks for working so hard for the city of Vista.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Franklin.
I I got so excited there, I almost looked underneath my chair. Uh, I would second everything that uh, Councilman Green said to our great staff, especially those who were honored this evening. Thanks for your dedication and commitment to the city. Uh, thanks to all of our employees. Uh, thanks to uh, all of uh, you, my fellow council members, uh, for all your hard work. I appreciate it. And to all the great people of Vista who tuned in tonight and those who didn't, we appreciate them too.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, just again, uh, thank you to all my coworkers. You guys make, uh, you know, the city of Vista run. Um, and you provide us uh, all the information that we could ever ask for and more sometimes when it comes to making our decisions. Uh, so thank you so much. And it's great that we get to honor uh, the hard work that you all do on a daily basis. And again, just want to thank my my colleagues. Uh, we always have great discussions. Um, and we do our our darn best, uh, you know, for the city of Vista. So I appreciate all the hard work that goes uh, into these meetings. Um, and other than that, uh, it's been hot, so make sure you're drinking tons of water. Um, stay in the shade if you can. And uh, also, even though it's super hot, we're still doing our trash pickups every Wednesday. So we meet at 9:00 AM at Luz Duran. Come sweat a few calories out, help us pick up some trash and um, keep Vista looking beautiful. So outside of that, I hope you all have a fantastic rest of your night and maybe it'll cool down just a little bit more, hopefully.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo uh, my colleagues. Thank you for staff and all the work that you put into everything that comes before us. And thank you to everybody who emailed and uh, made phone calls and commented tonight. Uh, we really do appreciate hearing from all of you. And we might not always agree on the council, we don't always agree. But I I love the discussion, I love the discourse. I love that we have the opportunity to come out here together as one people of Vista um, and have these discussions. And I appreciate you very, very much. And I'm, one of the things that I have been hearing from people about, I've received a few letters, I think we all have, regarding the litter along the freeway and the on-ramp, off-ramp areas surrounding the freeways. And this is something that we as a city, we have approached Caltrans before. Um, even in in pastimes, not just during this COVID-19 shutdown, but in pastimes. I know uh, Councilman Franklin and I went down along with, I think our city manager went with us to Caltrans to talk about some issues with Caltrans. And litter was was one of the problems as well then. Um, but it has become such a problem. And I know that when we contacted Caltrans a while back, they said, and this, I'm just gonna put this right out there, it just blew my mind that they said this, that in the midst of a global health pandemic, the trash piling up on the freeway was not an issue for them and they weren't going to address it. Um, I just didn't make any sense to me because as we know, trash and litter can be a health problem uh, for us. So it has become such a problem. And we are not the only community who has noticed this problem and is having issues with it. So at SADAG, the San Diego Association of Governments, in which all 19 jurisdictions, the 18 cities and the county uh, have seats at the table, we have created a litter abatement committee to directly address this countywide through all of the agencies, including Caltrans. And I have been appointed as the representative for the North County um, inland area and our city. And we're gonna be having our first meeting uh, down in San Diego next week. So I will keep everybody apprised of how that goes. I want to say thank you for calling us. Thank you for letting us know that you see it as well. We see it, we've been working on it and we will continue to work on it. And thank you to everybody who goes out and picks up litter. I appreciate that very much. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. The manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and talking about Caltrans, uh, Caltrans staff was precluded from the state from picking up trash on the freeway uh, up until the end of June, I believe. And it was disappointing to see that they they did go through the 78 corridor. They did clean up the trash, they cleaned up the weeds at the beginning of July. And literally a week later, uh, it it took on a much different look and continues to. And we at the staff level have contacted Caltrans and asked them to uh, do further cleanups on the 78 specifically in Vista. I do want to thank the council for your comments on city staff as a whole. And I do want to congratulate Laura and Chris and Aldo. They are truly great representatives of the city and very well-deserving of the awards that they uh, received. A couple of updates, um, the city is temporarily, uh, excuse me, the city's temporary rent and emergency relief program, this is the one that you all approved via the homeless strategic plan for those that are experiencing hardship during this COVID time. Um, the program will begin on August 31st. The program will begin on August 31st, and it is done through Lifeline. So if people are interested, they can go to nc lifeline.org and get more information. But it does begin on August 31st for the application period. I did want to let everybody know that street sweeping enforcement is going to resume again in Vista. It'll start on September 8th. And starting next week and the following week, we'll be going out and giving warnings on cars that violate the street sweeping code and to let them know that on September 8th, the program will once again resume from an enforcement standpoint. And the last thing that I wanted to mention was that we do have our fire personnel out on a few of the fires that are out there. We have two city crews that are out of the area. One is at the Sheep Fire in Lassen County, and the other is at the Lightning Complex Fire near Santa Cruz. So we have two crews out there. That's eight individuals. We also have a PIO that's been assigned to the Lightning Complex Fire. We also have a radio operator at the Woodward Fire. So our thoughts are with them, and hopefully, we see them back safe soon, and the fires are out for the folks in Northern California. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
And City Attorney, Daryl Piper, do you have anything tonight?
I have nothing special to add this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
About our city clerk, Kathy Valdez, anything?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I see nobody else. I will adjourn us. Thanks, everybody. Good night.